Good afternoon.
Thank you all for coming. We didn't realize we would have a full house or more than a full house, so make yourself as comfortable as possible. We bring in more chairs we can, but we'll go ahead and get our meeting started. So still hope that everyone is doing well and enjoying the kind of fall like temperatures. I think it may get a little bit warmer during the week, but enjoy the weather while we can. If you should ever need to know what decisions were made at board meetings, feel free to reach out to Dr. Johnson or any board member. Minutes of our meetings are posted on the website after they are approved during the following month's meeting. We encourage everyone to stay informed. The correct knowledge is powerful. I have the distinct honor of introducing our pastor for this afternoon, Pastor Tony King, Senior. He is the Senior Pastor of Union Grove Free Will Baptist Church in Clinton, North Carolina. With over thirty years of ministry experience, Pastor King is a kingdom-minded, team-oriented, and critical-thinking leader devoted to spreading the gospel of Jesus Christ and advancing the mission of the church. In January 2022, Pastor King launched the King's Men's Broadcast, a ministry focused on encouraging and empowering men to walk in integrity and righteousness. Recognizing the importance of strong faith-centered marriages, he and his wife expanded their outreach in February 2022 with the King's Love Broadcast, designed to minister to couples and inspire them to build their marriages on biblical principles. Pastor King's heart is to serve and strengthen the body of Christ by using his God-given gifts to equip, encourage, and edify believers in every walk of life. Please join me in welcoming Pastor Tony King, Senior.
Thank you, Dr. Brunson. It's an honor to be here once again. I have to say that I came up in there through the county, through way of Hopton, and I never, you know, was involved really in Clinton, but I have been impressed with what I've seen, you know, early on in the school year when you guys invited me out. The teamwork, the camaraderie, you know, just the excellence that I see at work in this system. And I know you guys love your kids. Just to hear how you've been talking about, you know, them and what you want to do for them, and I like your motto as well. It's important in this stage that, you know, we have people in place who really care because we don't understand someone in the background, so many kids are coming from. So it's important that, you know, we have a well-rounded group that will work together and that is, you know, the utmost is that the kids get what they need, you know, whether that's, you know, educationally, nutritionally, all of that, all that matters, the total man, you know, that they get what they need because we don't know what's going on home. So we want to make sure at least whenever they're in our care, we're doing the best that we can for them. So I give you guys an applause for just what I've seen myself, you know, that you guys are doing, and I'm just grateful that you asked me to be a part of it. Amen. So I'm gonna pray and get out of the way that you guys do what you came to do. Amen. Most holy Father, we thank you, we praise you, we honor you, Lord God, for this time that we come together. God asks that you bless this board. God, give them the wisdom, the knowledge, and the understanding that they need, oh God, to govern this school system, to look out for the children that are under their care, and God, even look out for one another, God. And I don't know what the hierarchy is here, Lord God, but I know it takes more than one man to do this. So God, help them to join together, continue to work together, and come together and do what needs to be done for the betterment of the children, of the school system, to make things great, God, to make us a better person out of these children that they touch for society, Lord God, that they will be productive citizens when they grow up, God. Continue to instill these things in your teachers, in those that are over the teachers, oh God, those that are in charge, God. Let them understand that they have to answer to you as well, oh God, in the decisions that are being made. So God asks that you crown them with the wisdom that they need to make the right decisions, oh God, or God to carry forth what you've called them to do, because, God, it's not just a career, it's not just a job, God, but it's an assignment. So God, let them look at that as such, oh God, and they do the things that will be pleasing to you, Lord God. Therefore, the kids will be taken care of, the families will be taken care of, the community will become better, Lord God, because of what they're doing as a unit, God. The teamwork makes the dream work, God. So continue to continue to keep them close, oh God, and to do what's right, Lord God, and to help one another, oh God, anytime that there is a need, oh God, step in and not have to be asked, but to step up and do it because it is to be done. And I thank you even now, God, for allowing me to come out one more time and be a part of this, oh God. I pray that you continue to bless this. I pray that it continues to grow. Bless all the families that come out tonight, God, all the honorees, God, all those that are gonna be honored tonight, God bless them and their families, oh God, and let them even strive to do even better, oh God, that things will be even more in their life, oh God, their lives will be enhanced in all that they do, God. And now, God, I ask that you will continue to keep them safe, oh God, throughout this school year, oh God. Cover them in your blood, oh God. Oh God, allow them the same way that they come to school, to go home safely each day, God. I pray even now, Lord God, for protection for all of them, oh God. I pray even now, Lord God, protection for each school, oh God, in the name of Jesus, God. Continue to bless, continue to keep, continue to strengthen them, God. Give them everything that they need, oh God. As they call on you and ask you for wisdom, give it to them, oh God, all that they need, God. Let them not lack in any situation or circumstance, oh God. Fulfill their need, for you said that you will supply all I need according to your riches and glory. Supply their needs, oh God. Give it to them, God, as they need it, when they need it, because you can and you are able to do it, God. We thank you and we praise you for it now. In Jesus' name, amen and amen. God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor King, for the inspirational words. I have to say that Pastor King is a brother of our own sister Raquel Jones, so that's a brother. And please come back and join us at any time. Thank you. I welcome students and their parents, our staff, community, and all board members, those who are joining us in person, and those who are joining us via livestream. We also welcome our newspaper representative, our principals, our Students of the Month and their families. We have an architect here, our auditor is here tonight. And if I left anybody out, I didn't mean to. So we welcome everybody here tonight. Special thanks to Mr. Lowe for assisting with the technology today. Today is Wednesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and I officially call today's meeting of the Clinton City Schools Board of Education to order. Before I move on, I'd like to take a moment to thank our vice chair, Ms. Worley, for presiding over last month's meeting during my absence and my illness. I wasn't able to attend, but I listened to the entire meeting, and it was a great meeting. The avid presentations were outstanding. Thank you all for checking on me while I was sick and sending me well wishes and a delicious food. I really do appreciate all of you. Also, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish our esteemed superintendent, Dr. Johnson, a very happy birthday. Today is his birthday. Happy birthday, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. We will celebrate with him a little bit later. Our theme is One Dark Horse, Premier Driven. Our vision is our destination, where we're going and when we plan to get there. Our mission is our purpose, our goal, why we exist, and inspires us to action, and our core values are what we believe. Our values drive us and motivate us to continue the course of action. Our goal is to live our theme, One Dark Horse, Premier Driven, to realize our vision and our mission, and to fulfill our core values every day. Our deepest gratitude is extended to our frontline and essential workers, those who care for us and protect us. As everyone knows, we can't do this work alone. Your hard work, commitment, and dedication are recognized and appreciated. Our thoughts are extended to our students, employees, and their families who are coping with sickness and the loss of loved ones. Please remember our city, county, state, nation, and our international leaders and partners as we address the challenges that we face today. No matter who or what we are today, we can all be better tomorrow. We are stronger together. Roll call, please answer as I call your name, board members and attorney, Mr. Jeremy Edgerton.
Present.
Pastor Russ Emanuel.
Present.
Mr. Clark Hales.
Present.
Dr. Oscar Rodriguez. Ms. Carol Worley.
Present.
Attorney Rebecca Williams is joining us remotely.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson and his staff, Dr. Wesley Johnson.
Present.
Dr. Llena Carr.
Present.
Ms. Emily Devane.
Present.
Mr. John Lowe.
Present.
Ms. Sheila Peterson.
Present.
Dr. William Van III.
Present.
And Ms. Raquel Jones.
Present.
This, Mr. Cole, Hayes is not with us tonight. Actually, last month was Ms. Hayes' last board meeting, as she will be leaving employment with Clinton City Schools as of Friday this week. We wish Ms. Hayes much success in her new chapter. Thank you very much for the many years of service that you have given to the students, staff, and parents of Clinton City Schools. And I thank Ms. Jones for filling in for her tonight, and maybe next time, and the time after that, maybe. We will see. Please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On public comments, no one has registered for this session, so we'll move on to approval of the board agenda. Board members, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda. I ask for a motion to accept the agenda as written.
Madam Chair, I make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Hales. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second made by Pastor Emanuel. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Next item is the approval of the consented agenda. You've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. There were several items on that agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
Motion made by Pastor Emanuel. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Edgerton. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you so much. Next section is Educational Spotlight. That's why we're here. We have plenty of students and their families and our staff to be recognized tonight. So let's turn this over to Dr. Carr.
Yes.
September Students of the Month. We are so excited to celebrate with you. If we could ask, Elsie Carr, Elementary's principal to stand, the teacher if they're here, also the parents, but we would like Mr. Tyler McIntyre to come forward while we talk about you a little bit. And you're going to go around and shake everybody's hand, and then you will receive your certificate. Tyler is an exemplary student. He has great character. He is respectful to his teachers and fellow classmates. He shows compassion through his actions and his words. Tyler has shown courage in the first few weeks of school and has transitioned from being shy and quiet to coming out of his shell. In fact, he's becoming a leader in the classroom. He is eager to learn and a great peer helper to his classmates. We are very proud of Tyler as Elsie Carr Student of the Month. Thank you, Mr. Dirks. And representing Butler Avenue Elementary School, again, if parents would stand, as well as teacher and principal, we'd like to call Mr. Abraham Flores to the front to be recognized. Abraham has shown a great amount of support to his peers throughout the first weeks of school. He's always eager to get his work done and help his peers who may not completely understand the assignment. He comes into class each day with a positive attitude and demonstrates what a dark horse should look like. We are thrilled to have Abraham as a part of our Butler Avenue student body. Thank you, Dr. Newkirk. And Sunset Elementary, Sunset Avenue, if Maven Alvarez will come forward so we can celebrate you. Well, I've got it two ways. Is it Marvin or Maven? Marvin. Marvin, you look handsome this evening. Marvin is a model student. He's honest, orderly, respectful, and engaged. He's a hard worker and does his very best in all subjects. Marvin's respectful to everyone he encounters, and his peers look up to him. He's a well-deserving student who will represent Sunset Avenue School in a positive manner. His teacher says, "I'm enjoying every minute of working with Marvin" as a student.
Thank you, Dr. Carol.
And for Sampson Middle School, we have Wonderful McDougal. Wonderful is coming up, and boy, I love that cheer. Now that is some school spirit right there. Wonderful is kind and a respectful student who is consistently setting a positive example for her peers. She follows direction and demonstrates leadership in and out of the classroom. She excels academically and contributes her energy and her spirit as a member of the cheerleading squad. Wonderful was also recently selected to serve on the Student Advisory Board and represent her classmates. We are so proud of you, Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Faison. And Clinton High School, if D'Angelo Smith will come forward. D'Angelo has been a true advocate for education. He takes full responsibility for his learning. He puts forth the necessary effort to grasp math and understanding, and that even if it doesn't necessarily come easy for him. D'Angelo is always respectful and has a smile on his face every day. He's ready to try and do his best, and we are truly proud of him. Thank you, Mr. Green. And congratulations to all the September Students of the Month. We are very proud of you. Okay, next, I'd like to call Trip Gillespie to the front. We are here to recognize Trip and his entire team, which is a large part of community and family and friends. And I just want to read you a little bit about the story of this awesome young man. Trip, he has a birthday every year, and instead of asking for birthday presents, he asks for items and has, following the steps of his sisters and its family, they are such a giving family. He has created Insecure No More. He has personally been doing this since the age of ten. This year, he turned thirteen. Trip has collected eight thousand four hundred and twenty-seven items. This project started with his sister Olivia in 2013, when she turned ten, and continued through her nineteenth birthday. Trip has taken over and is now carrying the torch. Donations support Backpack Buddies through Clinton City Schools and the Food Pantry at Sampson Middle School, and it's impressive. It's very impressive. This year, Trip has also donated items and started a personal hygiene area in the pantry, and this includes feminine products, toothpaste, deodorant, body sprays, dental floss, soap, and similar essentials. Since the program began, a total of ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-two items. Since the program began, a total of 97,942 items have been donated to Clinton City Schools. And we are so proud of you and your team, and even your little thank you cards are impressive. I mean, he sends thank you cards when someone does something, and they're cute and meaningful. So we honor you and thank you for thinking of others. If the entire Gillespie Wonderful crew will come forward and take, we'd like to take a picture with all of you. Yes, please. And maybe Dr. Johnson in the board chair get a picture with you guys with this small memento of all you've done. We have so many people to celebrate. If our Governor's School attendees for the summer will come forward, we have asked that they prepare a two- to three-minute presentation to share with the board to let you know how much they appreciated being given the funding to attend Governor's School as well as that experience. So we will ask them to do their presentations, and then we're going to honor you with a certificate. Okay?
Hi, everyone. My name is Raina Jones, and I got the opportunity to go to Governor's School this summer. But I was the only one who went to East. My two friends, they went to West, so I was by myself, but it's okay. So a little bit about what it is, it was like this really, we lived on college campus. We lived on Meredith College. And it was a very nice experience, but when I got there, y'all, I thought I was like, I was like, oh, this is not the place for me. I'm not supposed to be here. Everyone just seemed so smart and they seemed so above what I did here because there's a lot of stuff that they took in school that I didn't get to take just because we don't have it. But I realized quickly that that was not the case. We were all exactly the same, even though some people did have a leg up and stuff. But we did a lot of good things there. We did a lot of hard things. It was really like school. But my area one was social science, so I went thinking that it was just psychology, and it is not. It is not just psychology. There's so much. There's like the psychology part, but then there's like social studies, and that is not my strongest area. So I was really having to just puff it out. I would have to ask questions, and there was times where I just felt like I needed to go home and that this wasn't for me. But I pushed through. I got it. I got there. And I did my cornerstone on the psychology behind why we obsess over celebrities. And it was really interesting. It was really fun to make. It was really good to like go out and get info from peers that I was talking to. But a little more about what happened whenever I first got there. I cried. I cried, and I held my mom, and I was like, I don't want you to leave me. But she was like, you need to go. You need to go. You need to go to this meeting, and you need to grow up. So I grew up, and I feel like it really helped me as a person because I had to learn, okay, you have to get up before nine, and you have to be dressed, and you have to, you have to go to class. And if you're late to class, then that's on you. And nobody was driving. You were walking. So that was, that was really hard because... And then we had, you know, to go eat in the dining hall, and that was also another really hard experience because it was just not my home, so it was not food I was used to. But, and then guest speakers that we had, we had a guest speaker. His name was Cheryl Rowland, and he actually was incarcerated, and his story is really interesting. I'm not going to spoil it. So if you guys want to go listen to him, he does these really amazing projects where he sits in a jumpsuit and he has a square and he just sits there. And if people want to come talk to him, they can only talk to him in the square. And it was really eye-opening for me, especially just things that I have dealt with in life. And it was like, okay, so people do understand and people do get that whole, oh, you know, you're different, so it doesn't really matter. But it was really eye, it was, it was an eye-opening experience. I really, really enjoyed it. And if you get the chance to go, please go, because I didn't think I, I didn't think I could go because I knew Evan went, and I knew that J.C. went. These are two people that I thought were like the smartest people in the school. So I was like, oh, you know, and I didn't take AP classes. I didn't take any of those. So I was just like, how do I get to go and I'm not up here, you know? But everybody was just so welcoming and it was so nice. It was just being able to talk and not have to dumb it down. Sorry if that's rude, but to have to just be able to speak at such a high elevated way that I could and not have to, you know, what does that mean? What does that mean? So it was just really nice overall, and I really enjoyed it. But just to close it out so I can let the others speak. I would just say that thank all of y'all for the opportunity. Thank y'all for paying for it because that was the biggest thing. It was a lot of money. So thank y'all for paying for it. I toughed it out. And if I could do it again, I would. I probably would want people that I know, though, because I was the only person from Clinton. I was the only person from Clinton, and I was the only person from Sampson County. So it was very nerve-wracking. But thank y'all, all of y'all. So I'll let the others speak now.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nia Carr. I'm a senior at Clinton High School. And I was at Governor's School West with Kayla. We were, there's not many people from our area down there, so it was definitely eye-opening to see where everybody came from and how everybody was just different in their own ways. I was there for theater, and I was there along with 15 other students. At home, I'm used to musicals. So I go to Governor's School, and I'm like, okay, we're going to get a script. We're going to work and just put together this show for four weeks. It was nothing like that at all. We actually did experimental theater with this, which is something I've never done. You just basically, you get together and you just do things. It's basically improv. So our show was, nothing was scripted. You just did stuff on stage, and everybody loved it every time. So I would go onstage not knowing when I'm doing this show. So Area Two. So my Area Two class was applied philosophy. And our Area Two and Area Three classes were to get us acquainted with people in Governor's School that aren't in our area, so you're not stuck with the same 16 people every day. And it resembled a college schedule, so Area Two was Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Area Three was Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. So along with that, our community was, it was, it resembled school, but also it didn't. It gave you that taste of college while still being with people your age and enjoying your time. So we did seminars. Some required, some weren't. Or one of our required seminars where the show of Rowland started, I'm not going to talk about it because Raina gave a really good explanation. We learned about Cheryl Rowland. We learned about college preparation. We had a college fair. Schools from all over North Carolina came through, and we actually got, I have some direct admissions offers just from being at Governor's School. So it's, thank you. So it's just an overall experience, and like Raina said, if you get to go, please go. Go have the time of your life and like just enjoy it. Every student was, we just excelled in our own ways. You didn't have to be the same as someone, or you didn't have to try and be better than someone because you all feel like, hey, we're doing this together. So lastly, I'm going to stop talking. I just want to say thank you, guys, for funding us. Thank you for giving us this opportunity because it wasn't possible without you, guys. And yeah, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kayla Sereno, and my Area One was Spanish. And I was there along with Nia. And going into Governor's School, I was really nervous. I almost cried. And I wanted to go home. It was so nerve-wracking. I was not used to being in a space like that. And once I arrived there, I saw how welcoming everyone was. And I had to, like Raina said, thug it out. So yeah, and arriving to my Area One, I expected kind of a lot of, we were going to learn more about the Spanish language and like more about, like, the science behind it, I guess you could say. But no, it was completely the opposite. The class was full of different types of people. We had, it was really diverse, which I did not expect because there's, you don't really expect a lot of people to speak Spanish, so it was really surprising. And we were definitely immersed in the culture, different Latin cultures. We got to learn new dances. We got to learn the different dialects that are speaking in these countries. And it was really impactful to see how the U.S. has taken part and supported these countries. And one thing that I really took from that class was our immigration system and how, how complex it is and how challenging it can be. And that really impacted me because coming from parents that are immigrants, I can see like the struggles they've gone through and the challenges. And while there, there was many seminars that were offered by our Area One teacher. And there was also a seminar offered by our fellow, which is technically the, like, the teacher helper. And she, she works with a lot of immigrants. She worked at the border. And she would tell us like all these stories that they would mention to her. And that really impacted me, and it inspired me to further my knowledge in these concepts and how I can help, how I can help impact the immigration system. So Governor's School really opened my eyes to like so many things that I never thought I would get to come across. And I'm like really grateful for all the friendships that I made my time, through my time there. I met a whole bunch of people that I probably wouldn't have met if I wouldn't have gone. And I'm really grateful for, for my time there, and I want to thank all you guys for giving me the opportunity and also these two girls that are here, and I'm really thankful. Thank you.
Hold on so you can take a picture again. And while they're taking a picture, board, we received good news about Governor's School. Just this week, we learned that due to our Tier One status, Dr. Johnson will get to select two superintendent choices to, well, he gets to say two. He gets at least two that are in automatically just because he said so, that they go through the process. And then, of course, you know, if they have nominations in arts, I've already received a nomination for Spanish. And the only caveat is he can't select like two for social sciences. So they have to be in different areas, but I think that's great news. Juniors, Governor's School applications are open.
It's good to see everyone tonight. Glad to have such a great crowd. I was telling, I don't know if y'all saw me smiling, but this is, what we just saw is what it's all about. I mean, when, when you've been doing this as long as I have, this is year 28 for me. You can tell with, by my beard that it's all turning white, but this is what we're seeing. What we just saw, witnessed is what wakes me up every morning. And actually, I got up at 3:30 in the morning, this morning, to start working on items for the board. But it's, it's what I get excited to do. So another thing that gets me excited is to recognize our employees. We have a great group of employees and staff that work here in Clinton City. So our Employees of the Month for September. Oh, you're good, Mr. Love? Oh, yes, we, we had a, we had a, and we'll get to it in a minute. But we had, we had an employee that we were trying to shelter from seeing her nomination. She's the one who actually inputs this information into the board docs, and we didn't want her to know that she was the September Employee of the Month, and that's Ms. Hayes. So we had to put in a false one, so John is, John is going to the one that is actually the correct one. So John is ready now, and we'll start at LCK Elementary. And we have Ms. Emily Colt. So Ms. Emily Colt serves as the music and art teacher at LCK and has amazing creativity and spunk about her. If you know Ms. Colt, you know she has a lot of spunk and creativity. She carries a positive energy that is refreshing to be around. Her love for the students, staff, and families of LCK can be seen in all that she does throughout the school year. We couldn't be more proud to name Ms. Emily Colt as our LCK September Employee of the Month. And we have the September Employee of the Month here from Butler Avenue. Yeah, she's going to come join us up front. I think she also came to the last board meeting.
I did.
Yeah, yes, because she was part of the Avid presentations. And so we have with us tonight, Ms. Jessica Royal. And again, Jessica's been a strong advocate for both students and teachers and continues to be an invaluable support by ensuring that our students remain on track with their learning. Ms. Royal is also a member of our Avid team. And so Avid, let me tell you real quickly about Avid. We had a three and a, well, three and a half day trip down to Orlando, and we left on Father's Day. And you come back that late, like late, late that Wednesday night, and our teachers do not get paid to go take this trip. And so they, I think maybe they get some traded time or something. But to give up three days of their summer, to have to leave on Father's Day, I thank all of our Avid participants for doing that, and Jessica was there, and she was motivated and doing a great, great job with Avid. Yeah, maybe I was just thinking the present tense instead of past tense. But we do deeply appreciate Jessica's service and dedication to our school. Jessica Royal. Oh, do I have something?
Yes, we did.
Do you want to go this way?
Moving right along, we will move on to Sunset Elementary School. And this is Ms. Michelle Schmidt. So Michelle has been helpful with helping prepare Sunset Avenue and their staff for a better year. Michelle does her best to answer all questions. She is the media coordinator there at Sunset, and she doesn't, if she does not have the answer, she will ensure that she will seek one out to find the answer. Michelle is patient and is truly a great resource. Again, tonight, our Sunset Elementary School Employee of the Month. Again, tonight, our Sunset Elementary School uh, Employee of the Month, Michelle Schmidt. Sampson Middle School, one of our Assistant Principals, uh, Ms. Charnae White. Uh, Charnae presents a pleasant attitude, a smile, and uplifting comment each day. Whatever you need her to do, she delivers it effortlessly. Charnae is also a solution-driven and she has a very humble spirit. Uh, she has shown growth as, as an administrator and is very approachable, always smiling and has her students' best interest at heart. I would also say the staff. My wife works at uh, Sampson Middle School and frequently talks about how inviting uh, Charnae is. So again, September, uh, Sampson Middle School Employee of the Month, Assistant Principal, Charnae White. Uh, Clinton High School Employee of the Month uh, for uh, this month is Ms. Jennifer Thompson. Uh, so Ms. Thompson is always appropriately dressed for success, leading the way for her students. She is always looking out for our graduates, making sure they are prepared for the next step. And I'm gonna add to this because our Board and the Superintendent knows it's not just the students that she's looking out for. But when we have our graduation, she comes in there, she makes sure that we're appropriately dressed, where we're supposed to be at the right time. And if we're not, she gonna get on us. So uh, again, Clinton High School Employee of the Month, Ms. Jennifer Thompson. And our final uh, Employee of the Month, who we actually celebrated yesterday, uh, I think the word that Ms. Peterson used was soiree. Uh, so we had a soiree uh, yesterday uh, for Ms. Nicole Hayes. Um, and I don't know that we have any writing, but we said uh, a lot of us shared our sentiments in regards to Ms. Hayes. Uh, Ms. Hayes does so much for the Superintendent and the Board that I, that's probably why we don't have words up here. Uh, we probably can't put in the words uh, how uh, her presence uh, lights up the room. Uh, it infiltrates uh, your spirit. Uh, she is a humble, humble servant. Uh, and uh, although we uh, uh, hate to see her go, we know that she's been called uh, to a higher calling. She's gonna be working in the ministry full-time. Uh, she's gonna be working uh, with students uh, who are, you know, coming uh, 18, 19 years old. Uh, coming out of the DC, DSS services and working with those students to find them placements and get them uh, e- embodied to uh, adult, adulthood and adult life. And we wish uh, Ms. Nicole Hayes uh, all the best. Uh, so uh, I, I will say she's my Employee of the Month uh, since September 2018, because that was the day I was hired. Uh, but uh, Ms. Nicole Hayes, Employee of the Month for 2025. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson and Dr. Carr. And congratulations again to all the students and their families for coming out tonight. Thank you and thank you for your hard work. We're just in the first month of school. It seems like we've been in it for a while this year. So again, we thank you for already showing how, how, how you can work and do great things already in the first month of school. So let's take a five-minute break. And um, those of you who would like to leave are welcome to leave at this time, or if you'd like to stay, we're gonna be here for a while. So again, thank you for coming. I'm gonna have a nerve to have a meet in the middle of my meeting. If I can have your attention, we'll go ahead and uh, reconvene the meeting. If I can have your attention, we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you all for your patience. Um, seems like you were having a good little old time while we were waiting anyway. Uh, next item on the agenda is Technology and Facilities, Mr. John Lo. And I think he's gonna introduce Mr. Robbie Ferris and his team.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am. We have Mr. Robbie Ferris and he's brought part of his team. And they're gonna talk about our potential new elementary school project.
Okay, thank you all for allowing me to be here. I know you've already had kind of a long meeting and I understand from your auditor, you're gonna have an exciting meeting tonight. So thank you for taking the time um, to let us be here and to kick this project off. We're really excited about it. Uh, first, I want to introduce you to the folks that are with me today. Mahan Kick will be the Project Manager. Um, Mahan is the person that probably will be working with John most day-to-day on, as we go through this project, from design all the way into construction. And then Danny Garrett is one of our extremely talented uh, architects, talented designers. So he's one of those artists, just brilliant in every way, a little quiet. You're gonna hear from him today too. So what we're gonna do is uh, first go over the preliminary program. So we've started looking at number of classrooms and things like that. And then uh, we're gonna get into site plans, looking at site plans, and then um, some floor plan layouts. And we don't really need a lot of decisions tonight, but we need to be moving towards a couple of really important decisions that we're gonna need in order to submit your needs-based grant. Y'all probably know the application came out a few weeks ago and it's due the 3rd. Um, so uh, that's quick, much quicker than normal. Uh, we didn't expect that, but um, so the, the one thing that we need to probably just be moving towards a decision on is where it's going to be located. That is the one thing that will be handicapped on if we submit our grant application and we don't know where it's going. And I know that's gonna be a really hard decision for y'all. We've got some site plans we want to look at tonight and we'll talk about what it's gonna take to make that decision. Might be easy for you. I don't know. It may be more challenging. So um, we've already talked about the uh, needs-based grant application. We can move on to the next one. I'm gonna turn it over to Mahan and let him start to go through some of these uh, the program and the, the number of classrooms, things like that. Mahan, go ahead.
Thank you, Robbie. You probably need to be here.
Yep. Uh, again, my name is Mahan Kick, uh, Project Manager. Um, my first step, uh, looking at the contract and figuring out exactly what you guys wanted. Uh, you guys had stipulated that you wanted a 900-plus facility for a PK through second grade. Um, additionally, you had specified and I kinda highlighted here for the PK classrooms. DPI doesn't actually calculate a capacity for pre-K classrooms, but you guys had stipulated in our contract as far as calculating the capacity of the facility, that it be calculated 20 students per that, per classroom. So here you can see, I've, I've made some assumptions on the number of classrooms and that's something that we need to review with you guys to make sure that my assumptions are correct. But as you can see, I've got 10 pre-K classrooms. Easy math equals 200, you know, PK students. I've got 12 kindergarten classrooms, which again, works out to about 216. Again, a little bit jump up, which is what we would typically see going from pre-K to K. Um, and then I've got 14 each of first grade and second grade classrooms. So the rest of those numbers that are in black, those are stipulated by DPI and those are calculated based on that. This comes out to a 908 student, so pretty much right on to the target of a 900-plus facility. Um, if you could go ahead and click to the next slide. Uh, second step, DPI has space profiles. Um, so I basically took that, this is kind of boiled down uh, to the primary spaces. There's a lot of it kind of hidden cells. But again, the classrooms, the primary uh, core classrooms, again, matches what I had calculated from the, the previous sheet. Uh, this pretty much main goal here, we need about 120,000 square feet for, for this size facility. Um, that then allows us to, to really, you know, it gives us a base set of information that we can now use when we start to look at the, the site analysis and figure out, alright, if we know we need 120,000 square feet, we know we need 900-plus students. Again, DPI then says we need a minimum of about 19 usable acres. Um, again, that's based on the calculation that they give us. So we'll go ahead and jump into site plans. We'll pause right there on that, that slide um, here. This is kind of an overall GPS. Um, and we've kinda highlighted Area 1, 2, 3, 4. You guys all have printed copies of this presentation as well. Um, these are some different parcels that you guys had mentioned to us are potential sites for this facility. Uh, so we've also, the little orange dots are actually existing school facilities. Um, so you can kinda see the proximity. I'm not sure if you guys are leaning towards a certain area or, you know, tho- that's the information you guys need to kind of come back to us. But those are the different regions where we're kinda, we initially evaluated the sites. So if you go to the next slide, site, here's site number one. Uh, this is right off of 421. Um, it's a fairly large site, 50 acres. We calculate there's probably about 37 usable acres. That partly has to do with they didn't cut the trees down for a purpose, for a reason. There's either wetland or the topography. There, okay. You, you seem to know the, that piece of property. Okay.
Just, it's that hole, not where the building is, but where the trees are.
Or the whole thing is pretty low. Well, that's good information. Um, there, there are certain things that we could, if, if there is a certain area that, you know, is low and um, there is concern about flooding, that is something that we can build up a footprint. But this was one of the properties that we were asked to evaluate. It is along some ma- major thoroughfares. So you will have, you, you know, your utilities, electrical, plumbing, sewer, gas. Those are probably gonna be pretty easy access to this site. And so those are cost savings that, additionally, it's a fairly flat site there in the middle. Yeah. Yes. So because this is located on the major thoroughfare, there's probably gonna be all your, your utilities already there.
But if we have to build it up three or four feet, then we're gonna spend money.
Then we got additional costs there. Yep.
So it's a trade-off. Most of these sites, you're gonna have some trade-offs like that. For example, one of the things we talked about today is, we've got to still evaluate is, do you have water pressure, enough water pressure for a sprinkler system? We don't have enough water pressure for a sprinkler system. We gotta put a pump and a tank in. And that's a million and a half dollars. You know, building the site up, that's a million and a half dollars. Running water and sewer to the site, that's a million and a half dollars. So there's all these trade-offs that we'll have to get into. But if we can begin to narrow it down tonight and then we can go over the next week, really look hard and then maybe make some decisions. We really need a decision before October 3rd. And I know that this is late in the game. We just started looking at this. That's gonna be hard to do, I know. But if we can make a decision, it'll make your grant application better. If we can't make a decision, we're better off submitting it without a site. Because if you submit it with a site and you change it, they're not gonna be happy.
So this is the dead end. But then that also goes farther. But as far as the site goes, this one goes to dead end.
So is it dating?
Uh, let's go back down to that previous uh, slide.
Um, I guess we, our, our map kinda cuts off here, but actually it's a little bit. It, it just handsome road is a dead end.
DOT actually probably would prefer us to take our DOT actually probably would prefer us to take our access off of that dead end road than going directly off of 421. Again, other evaluations that we, you know, another calculator I didn't put in here, I did look at, you know, DOT likes us to do all of our linear stack on existing sites now. For this size facility, you're probably going to need about 3,000 linear feet of stack. That's basically car loop to have all your parents who drop in off their students are not on DOT roads and causing backups.
If anything has to be done, that road, as far as widening or anything, does our cost occur?
So, if DOT requires off-site improvements, you are required to pay the upfront cost, but they are required to reimburse you for that cost. Any off-site improvements that they require. Now, part of our evaluate, or once we make a selection of a site, we would have our civil engineer meet with DOT, MSTA, and they would make recommendations to do a TIA study to determine whether off-site improvements are required. Let's go to the next site. So, this is, yep.
Yeah, go ahead.
Site number two. This one is just down the street from Kerr Elementary Car. Thank you. It is 31 acres, but as you can see, the usable acreage of this site is significantly lower. It's at 15. And that has to do with basically the flood zone as well as you can see the 38-foot drop, you know, once you get to the back end of that site, it really drops off significantly. If this was a site that you guys were really interested in, it'd be a little bit challenging, you know, but that's where we want to kind of show you. Again, I think because of its location, the street there and close to downtown, you're probably going to have pretty easy access to your utilities. But you may be compromised on playfields or some of those other additional spaces that go along. Site number three. At the bottom left-hand corner, you actually can see your middle school and high school. This is a very large piece of property. It's at 150 acres. We calculate about 98 usable acreage. Right now, according to GIS, there is some kind of wetland here. We think that these are probably irrigation kind of canals. Right. There's any.
They just, about the hill in Elizabeth.
Ellen Elizabeth.
Straight to call, they just buried, they just buried a 8-inch gas sign, 12-inch gas sign.
So, you think it came pretty close to this corner?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
We might be okay here not being on top of it?
Yeah.
Got to watch it.
Well, and... Okay, so we will need to get easements, do title search, as well as figure out like, I mean, so that's information that would become available.
And we stayed out of that wetlands. If in fact we could fill it, that would give us some more options. One of the nice things about this site is it's big enough where, you know, if we could fill that, we could probably, even if we could, we could probably get a better school on that side at some point if you wanted to. And then all your schools would kind of be together.
Yes, sir.
So, that would be an advantage. And if you want to do that, that would be something we need to kind of rearrange.
Consider it. A master plan would probably be worthwhile.
We would go ahead and plan both schools. So, the drop-off, because you probably, you know, if you did another school there, it'd probably be, you know, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. So, if we can do it, we want to set it up so that a parent could, there's one queuing line and they can drop off and then the students go that way. Right? So, because one car might have a second grader and a fifth grader. So, that would be, that would be the consideration here if you do that one. That's a high probability you want to do that in the future.
And did you see in the first side, there's a cemetery on that rock? You know that?
Okay. I was not aware of the cemetery.
Oh, this.
Right there. I think there's, isn't that still? That's grand, that's grand cemetery at the top of Hanson. But I looked, there's a small family cemetery down there.
On that one, I would honestly propose that we would rotate that plan on that site if we were considering it, but our fourth site is actually kind of a combination of a couple of different parcels that you guys noted for us to check out. There's a parcel here and a parcel here that are not large enough by themselves for the construction of this new facility, but the parcel where we have the, you know, the project kind of located is kind of landlocked. It is not attached to any main thoroughfares. So, you would need to either go through the existing campus or go through one of those other parcels. And so, that's something that you would have to evaluate.
That's kind of incorporating some of the trees behind maintenance and, yeah, maintenance and the football stadium. So, don't we own some of that already?
All that's right there. This thicker line is everything that's owned by the, is owned. These two are for the high school, middle school, and then all this is what was sent. So, we placed it there and we were wondering if there's any insight on, is that just trees that aren't cleared? Because it's relatively flat, so.
You don't own it.
You don't own the green. You do own these two.
The church is here at the corner. I think where you got that school is going to be a little on the damp side, because that's where our lane used to have, he had cows in the clear spot. And there's a reason why we didn't clear that 20 or 30 acres and that cow corner there.
We will need to walk all, any of these that you, that y'all kind of hone in on, we'll definitely need to walk. And we'll need to do a much deeper dive. This was just basics.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Do you have, do you have any soil data from?
There are some basic data that is available on the Sampson County GIS, but again, we didn't, we haven't done a geotech report. No, no. Yeah, right now, that site, you can see kind of the hatch, that is designated as a wet zone area, right? That kind of separates. But those are, those are the four sites that we were kind of asked to kind of evaluate.
Like where the radio church is, that farm right there.
That was not one that we were told to look at, but if there's potential for that one to be available, that's something that we could look at.
Do you know if it could be acquired?
Anything's for sale.
Do you have time to get all this information on that piece of property by the time that you need a chance to promote?
We can, yeah. Now, we're not going to have time for soil borings and things like that, but we would put that in your application. We would say, we evaluated multiple sites. The Board of Education has selected this site. We're in the process of getting soil borings. So, we'd be very straightforward with DPI, because if, let's say, we pick a site and the soil borings end up terrible. You know, we would want to move it, but then we would have told DPI in advance that where we were in the process. I think just being really transparent about where we are is key.
I have a question. For sites three and four, can Walkinbridge Road and West Elizabeth Street handle that foot traffic? With what we already currently have?
So, we would have to do a traffic impact analysis. That's probably a 60 to 90-day process. I think the answer is yes. The question is, if we think there's a problem, we may have to widen a lane or something. And that is not uncommon when we do schools, to have to widen a road.
Who would incur that cost?
The Board of Education.
You could also, like, hold a second. You could also address that with like arrival times and your start times. You start time, we already start the middle school at 7:30, the high school at 7:45. And if you could stagger those start times a little bit more needed to, free up some of that traffic.
We did get reimbursement, some reimbursement from DPI. We also get reimbursement for the bus parking lot. I think it's up to 150,000 now for that.
And you said some of like road widening and that type thing is reimbursable through DOT?
If DOT determines that off-site improvements are required, so if...
But that would be a part of your traffic.
Correct. That is correct. So, if they said that you needed a traffic light or a circle, you know, or any kind of off-site improvements.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
The way you have for site three, your parking, and where you have the footprint for the school. Is that, could that orientation be changed?
It probably, it probably would. After we did this, we realized...
You could actually come out on the service road and probably lighten the load of the traffic. Directly straight above.
About where change.
Where change four is. Yeah, straight up.
There's a road that goes back to West Elizabeth.
It runs in between tram road and West Elizabeth Street.
That's a good idea. That might...
That's why I was asking, because you changed the orientation of it, or is it fixed like it is?
Yeah. No, we could change it and that might give us an opportunity to do what I was saying, have one queuing line and then two schools, one now, one in the future.
I will just, we, I didn't, I didn't say this earlier, but like the block there for the PK2 school, that's based on that 120,000 square feet. The parking, we wanted you to see, you know, for a bus loop and a, but absolutely the orientation. Once we really start to dive into a site and say, this is where we want to see if we can kind of manipulate it, we would be looking more detailed at that bus loop, that parking loop, the parent drop-off loop, where the playgrounds go, and they can absolutely be kind of readjusted and rearranged to better fit a site.
Because these four sites were identified, was there any, and I don't, I think I know the answer, but was there any upfront discussion with property owners? Like, is that why these four were kind of sort of identified?
I was given parcel, I was given parcel numbers.
Yeah, we have not talked to any property owners.
As we, so we're supposed to look at these options here and kind of decide which site that we might prefer? Do we have any idea the cost of this, these sites? Okay.
No, we don't.
Okay. It does matter.
And it does matter, but additionally, you can't use any of the lottery money for the purchase of a property.
Okay.
The property either.
So, I want to make sure I understand you correctly. There's been no conversation about the property, but we have to pick a spot and have the date to you by October.
In an ideal world, we have to have a site selected, and if we can't, we will submit the needs-based grant application without a site, understanding that we're going to be a little bit handicapped. And remember, the application just came out a few weeks ago, so all this is coming at us really fast.
I understand it's fluid. I understand it's fluid. So, what if you pick, just for instance, site three, you're not able to purchase that property? And you submit that in your plan?
That would be a problem, because the next point I would make is if we select a site, what DPI would ideally like to see is a letter of intent to sell or some sort of, something that says with the property owner that there's some interest in selling it.
So, you're basically giving us three weeks, four weeks to talk to property owners and procure a site?
Yes, sir. Now, if you, if you can't, like I said, we'll submit it without it.
What's the consequences of submitting it without?
I'd say that... So, remember, this is a competition. It's needs-based and you're competing with all these other districts and DPI scores the applications. Having a site is not actually a criteria, so you don't get points for it. But if you end up with the same score as seven other school districts, which my understanding is, is not uncommon, they've got to decide which projects do they think are more realistic to actually happen? So, if someone else has a site and they have a floor plan, you know, they're further along than you are. They might say, well, we're going to give it to this district this year and we'll wait for this other district to next year.
Okay, so based on your...
The needs-based grant this year will be more competitive than it was last year. A lot of systems saw how you think you could build a school free. So, I don't know how many districts are applying for the available money, but it is going to be more competitive than it was a year ago or two years ago, three years ago.
Those are encouraging words from your auditor.
Thanks for that information. I have another question.
Yes, sir.
What, in your level of expertise, how many have you seen get it without having a site?
I haven't actually looked. I know that all of them that we've submitted had a site, but I can find that out and come back to you. And I understand when we walked in here, I knew that this was almost an impossible task.
I'm not looking at, I just want to be optimistic about everything, but I also want to know what's going on.
Yeah, I understand.
So, I have a question. How many have you submitted that did not get approved?
Maybe, maybe a handful, maybe like four?
Four out of 50?
No, we've, I think we've gotten like 12 or 14.
So, Robbie.
And we got them the next year. So, we didn't get it one year and we get it the following year. I think we have one that we haven't gotten yet. We're going to get it this year.
I believe that.
So, if we, I'm trying to think about it from... If I, I'm going to relate it to what I do. Just to ask my question to see if it's in line with what I'm thinking. So, if I take a credit request and I submit a credit and the credit officer calls me and asks me what's the acreage of this land and, you know, various questions that I can't answer, I look like an idiot. So, if we submit a request and haven't had any discussions with landowners, do we look like an idiot?
Well, number one, you're not going to tell DPI that, but they're going to say the absence of a contract means you haven't had that conversation. Now, I will tell you, we did submit one for a school district y'all are very familiar with. And the landowner said, we will sell you the land, but there was no contract and there was no agreement on the price. There was nothing. We submitted it and it's probably going to work out, but we're designing that. They got it. We're designing the building and they still don't have the land under contract.
Was it, was it in the application though, that there was communication with the landowner? In any capacity?
I don't know the answer, but I don't think so. We just, I think we just put in... I don't know the answer, but I don't think so. We just, I think we just put in the application that that was the site, because we were highly confident. And, but that we still don't, the school district still doesn't.
And I'm just trying to wrap my head around the intricacies of the application, just to make sure we don't look that way.
Yeah.
Meaning. Did, well, let me ask this, and then I'll hush. Did the landowner know it was a potential site need or won't prior to it being identified as a site?
Yes, the landowner had verbally said that they wanted the school there. We have not talked to these landowners.
Do we know these landowners? Do we know who they are? Have we identified them?
We know the one across the street. The one down the street.
So then, we, we would go and talk to these four owners and get prices from each owner. Which makes it more interesting, because owner A might say yes, owner C might say no.
True.
And then the bathrooms go on Site D instead of B. Okay.
So when you submit the application, is there any part of the process that you go in for somebody to do any type of presentation or talk to, it's just your?
You just submit the grant application and hope for the best. So if we can't, again, if we can't pick a site, I'd say we submit the grant application without it. It is not a, it is not a criteria. So, um, it's one of those eyebreakers. We could put in the, in the, we could put in the application that we're in the process of evaluating sites.
Okay, so since the owners of these sites are known, who would be the one that would contact these people to see if they're interested and to find out a price? Would that be you? Would that be John?
Whoever knows them the best.
Oh, it could be anybody. Okay.
Probably working through John, so that there's a central clearinghouse. So that, oh, he's got all the information, and I don't know the answer to that. Whoever knows him the best. And, and if that one, like, across the street, if you know that one's, you know, dry, and you know it's a good piece of property, and you know that landowner, maybe you go talk to them too. And again, this is just getting the process started. We, you know, there might be other sites that y'all want to look at also. I wouldn't necessarily limit it to these. These are, I think, more logical, and I, the one site, um, I think it was three, I mean. I've, I think I've been hearing about that site for twenty years about a potential school there, so. You know, that may be why we were given that.
I do like that idea.
Yeah. All right, so now we're going to move on to some plan forms, and again, we don't expect y'all to make a decision tonight. What I really expect to happen is maybe these plan forms open your eyes a little bit about the options, and you say, uh, definitely don't like that, or that, but want to go look at some, maybe go look at some schools and look at some of these options in person, because they're. They're very diverse. Um, one is really economical, the other one's maybe in the middle, and the other one's a little bit more expensive, and they're, you know, and it like most, in most cases, you get what you pay for, so the quality of the learning environment improves as you spend a little more money. So we're going to go over those, and then if there's something that you just say absolutely not, we don't have to worry about going to visit something like that, okay? So I think Danny's going to do this, right?
Thank you. So diving into the design of the plan, a big part of that is looking at the wings and how you envision your classroom, your core classroom corridors to go, because they significantly change how the learning environment is. So looking at our wing study plans here, we have the double-loaded corridor that you're seeing, and this is your typical straight shot corridor, where you walk in, and it's class, 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 as far as you can see. So, um.
Go back, go back.
So just looking at.
Let me get in here a minute. Obviously, this is the most economical one. This is what we've been doing since nineteen fifty. Maybe before.
So yes, this is the economical one, but with that, I'm always looking to future-proof schools as I'm designing them, and you really see in the market they're turning into learning environments less just somewhere you go to a classroom. So looking at the more of a collaboration corridor, this is merging the two, still in that straight shot, double-loaded corridor-esque. But now you can see there's more glazing, the space is bigger, there's collaboration space in the middle, but then you also have to think about economic and the square footage that that's adding to it. And then for the third, this is something we're seeing emerging, where it's really a collaboration hybrid, where you get to do a stack plan and some, and then you have a double height, second graders can go upstairs, and then that also, when you angle your floor plans, it's bringing down your square footage, which then helps you economically plan a, a school. And then another thing this does is as you widen the end that goes into the school, you can start to add in resource rooms, work rooms, start bringing the school into these corridors, and also start bringing the corridors out into the school. And I think that they really make a very dynamic learning space. And then as stated before, um, you can start to stack the floors, and then you don't have the square footage upstairs, so it's all kind of working together, a give and take of space and economics. So just looking at some very, you know, early concept plans here, looking at the double-loaded corridor, you can really see this is the typical school where your entry, all your larger spaces, and then you all merge off into your own lands, and there's not much connection, and there's not, there's, they don't really lend themselves to collaboration. And then for the collaboration corridor, you can start to see they widen up, and then you're not just walking into the classroom, you're really walking into your collaboration for your wing. And then for the third, the hybrid, you can start to see that all the corridors are really opening to these bigger spaces, there's a lot more visibility from the main corridors where you can see down wings. And then another thing I wanted to bring up is, a lot of these sites, it's about footprint, and then this hybrid plan allows you to stack plans, which significantly decreases your footprint on the site.
So, so yeah, so maybe this wing would be seconds, two stories, because second graders can go upstairs. Pre-K, kindergarten, first grade's got to be on the main floor, and then the other two wings could be single-story.
Should we flip to the next, yes, you can see that the second graders will be upstairs, they have their collaboration resource, and then they also can start to collaborate with the first, the first graders, and then have the larger media center on that wing, and then they can all look down into dining, and it just makes a much more elaborate learning space versus just the one level straight shot.
Which one of those three models is the safest?
The safest?
From a safety standpoint?
Yeah, yeah, I think it's, thinking through.
So let's, I mean, let's address it, I mean, like, with, with this facility, it's a single entry. You do have exits at, at the end of each wing, but from this location, I can only see to here, and I can see to here, when an emergency, you know, responder comes to this facility.
So you're talking about active shooter safety?
I'm talking about safety for staff, students, everyone, yes.
Shooter?
With, yeah.
Okay, so. As Mahan said, some of the important things are our single-point entrance, and in all these options, you could have a single point. Being able to close the wings off is important, right? So we'll have doors right here, so there'll be a little button in the reception area, you push it, and all these wing doors will close in, so you can't get in the wings unless you've got a fire, right? So, um. If the shooter comes in the front door. And they go into the gym or the dining room, obviously, and those rooms are full. If they get into the gym or the dining room, then they can do a lot of damage. So what we do is we create that airlock vestibule. So you come in during the day, during the day, these doors are locked. Right, so you've got to come into the admin area, and the doors in the receptionist area are locked also. So you come in here, go into admin, you check in, and obviously, if you've got a gun, or there's something bad going on, and most events actually escalate. So someone's either sneaking in the back door, which by the way, that can still happen, but, um. Usually something escalates in that receptionist area, so in this case, the receptionist would not let that person go past that reception area. You want to keep them out of these bigger spaces, because there's not, if it's lunchtime and they get into that dining room, obviously, they can do a lot of damage, in all the scenarios, so they're all equal in that sense. You know, the, it really probably comes down to how much interior glazing are we going to have? So, you know, if you think about night, the older schools that we've done, we have hallways, and they're concrete block walls, they have almost no glass in them, and the older the school is, the less glass it has, right? Nowadays, because we're trying to design schools that are good for learning, we put more glass in, right? There's a lot of good things that happen from an education perspective, but then you got potential for a shooter to see through the glass, shoot through the glass, so then we can make decisions about, okay, are we going to have blinds that come down? We're going to have bullet-resistant glass, that, that costs more money. Um, what level of bullet resistance are we trying to provide? Again, do we just put the blinds down so that the glass is still there, but the person can't see into the classroom, into that space? A lot of detailed questions. I think.
Yeah.
Safety and security standpoint, we're going to make them all, they're all probably equal just.
Okay, that was, that was.
It's just a matter of how much glass we have.
Okay.
And then, and we're going to want more glass, because it's been proven to be good for learning.
Yeah, I was just wanting to know out of which three models, that was.
That's a good, it's a great question.
I, 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 I would just like to add with the safety concerns that we've heard and seen making these more open collaboration, is that when all your students are in there, they're already in there. Whereas your typical double-order corridor, they're all out in the media centers, and when you cut the wings down, they're outside. So when you bring up gl- glass and view and you can see in, it's also like an eyes-on-the-street mentality where there can be significantly less things happen when everyone is out and looking. So if you're all in the collaboration wings, and they get shut off, your whole school's in there, versus older schools where everyone has to scramble. So just, it's kind of flipping as we look into these schools.
This one is the same, like, these, these wings were just locked down, so you couldn't get into the wings. Now, obviously, if you got past the receptionist area, you might go get into the dining or admin area.
What? Washington County High, High School, the new, the new one, you just got, you did that one. That's ton of glass, right? Yeah, so what, say, can, because I've ridden by it a lot, what, what kind of precautionary safety measures did they take on?
So, so that one has these doors that can close down into the wing. Um, probably shouldn't talk about bullet-resistant glazing and things like that.
Right.
But that's a choice you get to make. Every Board of Education makes different choices about that, because it costs money.
Which floor plan and knowledge did they go with, because we haven't seen it?
It's more like this one. It's not exactly like this, but because it's a K through twelve school, so this is a, this would be more of a elementary model.
I, I also wanted to make one point. When we're talking about security and safety, identif- identification of threats and how quickly you can identify that threat is actually one of the best ways you can kind of prevent how big of a, you know, casualty it could be. When you have glass, you have that constant monitoring, and like Robbie said, we're, we're really thinking about how you can kind of lock down the school in an emergency situation, but we're also, from the very first time somebody's coming in this building, we're trying to identify threats and delay any kind of progression into the facility. So we're buying time, and we're trying to get the emergency people there as quickly as possible. So to me, there, there's going to be a threat. That's, that's unfortunately a part of the world that we, we live in right now, but we find that in our facilities, there's a lot of comfort in the fact that they can really monitor those facilities really easily, and they can identify threats quickly.
You know, one of the things we like to do, um, go back to that one. In this one, for example, admin is here along, we've stretched this one out along the plant, so there's a lot of windows. So not every administrator, not everyone in the admin area is going to be in their office, but hopefully, one or two of them will, and if they see someone walking in with a gun, they're going to alert you before anything bad happens. We normally put the receptionist right here with a window out, a window into the reception area, into the vestibule, and a window into the school, so that receptionist is really that control point. They have that button they can push.
Same concept we've got at the high school, right? Yeah.
Same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we enhanced that a little bit this past year, so.
Would you be able to, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I just ran, just a general question, since we're going through the floor plans and all, what what a nine-hundred head school, right? So what what, um, contingencies are put in place for? Is there room in there for some additional growth?
Absolutely, I mean.
We're eight-twenty-one, we're at eight-twenty-one right now. Those, those grades right now today, we're eight-twenty-one.
And those classrooms are based on DPI's calculations, like I said, seventeen for the first-grade classroom, maybe second-grade classroom. The number's spaced out, but historically, I, I got, there's a lot more students going into those classrooms than what DPI calculates. So, yeah. They're calculating twenty-six, sorry, seventeen kids in a second-grade classroom, sixteen kids in a first-grade classroom, you may have twenty-five in that classroom. So.
What's our?
Actual capacity of that facility is, is much more than what DPI calculates.
So just, I'm just, right, so what's our?
Right now, we're about fifteen in first grade, um, second grade, all of our second grade has seventeen students, um, except two, and they have eighteen. Right now, we have fifteen first-grade classrooms and thirteen second-grade classrooms.
How many kids in them?
Yes.
She's telling.
Second grade, we're, um, seventeen, eighteen. Um, first grade, right now, we are anywhere from fif- fourteen to sixteen.
So this is pretty consistent with what you're thinking.
Well, I, I was going to explain that, I, I was going to explain the reason why, because we are one grade per district. So as soon as we go one number over, we have to hire a new teacher. Because we don't have other schools that balance that equation. So as soon as our kindergarten hits two-thirty-six, we know that we have to get two-thirty-five.
Two-thirty-five.
We know we have to hire another kindergarten. So these numbers, you're going to have situations, like right now in eighth grade, we have like two-seventy-five in one grade level. Most of our grades are about two-twenty-five, but you're going to get situations where there's just one huge grade level. Like, I think we got a huge third grade. Um, and so we had to add two, two additional teachers to third grade this year. So you're going to have situations like that, but right now, we're at eight-twenty-one for those same grade levels.
And can you go to the next church?
Which, which, which is.
Great, because I guess we have, that's kind of what I was asking, we've planned for, should you have a larger grade level? There's room in this new proposed building to put some additional classrooms.
Yeah. And additionally, your core spaces, your dining, your media center, your, you know, all of those core spaces are designed to a larger capacity than the category for students, so that if you wanted to do an addition on the end of a wing to add four more classrooms, that you have that capacity, uh, you know, we've had. I've had school districts that said, go ahead and take all the utilities out to the end of the, the wing, go ahead and stub them up, so that we know that once we've reached our capacity, we can add that, and, you know. It's pretty economical to add those additional classrooms, if you've already sized all the mechanical and plumbing and everything.
And I know we planned for that, so that's, I appreciate that transparency, because, and you, and I don't think you've probably had this problem in a long time, but the old adage was, well, golly, they just built a new school, and they've already got huts back there, you know, so.
Never heard that one. So. Is there a do the board members have any sense of what they like, don't like? Do you want to go look at all of these? Um, we actually could.
I kind of like that.
Could, could I just say one, one thing about, I just wanted to say, talking about security, we always talk about coming outside, but as far as looking over the school, something we're finding with these more hybrid or compact plans is we're really minimizing the unnec- unnecessary square footage of extra hallways and corridors that you can't see, and you can see here, admin or the SRO can stand outside dining and move around and look down all of these wings at once, they're not. down all of these wings at once, they're not off in the corners. So it's just another point of security that it's also very visible inside.
Does, do the pages here, so they're not numbered, but it's fine. So the first
You know, these, these have flat roofs on.
That's up to you. We aren't, we aren't there, we aren't there. Not, okay, so we don't ever do flat roofs.
Yeah.
We do low slope roofs, and that is gonna come, that is probably gonna come to you in the form of a budget question.
Okay.
How much money do you wanna spend? So, but that's, that's for later.
Robbie, the, the three pages with the three different floor plan layouts, the three different designs, that being the third page of three.
Right.
Is that in order of cost, like?
So it's a good question, and it relates to the roof question. Okay, so, go back, go back to that one. Okay, so, obviously, if, if we put an angle, if we build that angled roof, we're gonna have some triangles somewhere, that costs a little more. If we actually put a rectangular roof on that, we get some outdoor space, which is nice. Um, so that can save us, actually, we're building more roof, but it might actually save us a little money. Uh, but, but, so, but let me go back, let me answer your question. This is probably a little bit more expensive.
Right.
And then, that's a little bit less.
Right.
And that's a little bit less.
Okay.
When I say little bit, think of order of magnitude with each one. Maybe between a million and two million dollars.
Between each level?
Between each level.
Right.
Probably more like a million, maybe up to two million. Some of that's gonna be determined by things like, what do we go with the roof and some other things?
So you could go with floor plan three, sorry, I'm not passionate about, you could go, you could go with floor plan three, right? Which of the three on paper is the most expensive of the three? But to your point a moment ago, if you design the roof a little different, you're saving some money there, which could, which could bump it back down a little bit.
That's exactly right. Plus, this one depends on, once we get into the details with you, this one can actually have less square footage.
Because of the way it's designed.
Because of the design, it's, as Danny said, it's more compact. So, um, DPI, depending on the school type, is gonna allow about thirty-nine percent for unprogrammed space is what they call it. We've gotten them down to as low as twenty-nine. Uh, and so
It was a dime, you could change, instead of having, you know, the old school twelve by twelve tile glued down, you could do, you know, you could do some swirls and, and polyurethanes, concrete, and, and have design or something that could cut a little bit of cost. There, 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 it was a dime we can get. That made, that made later on down the road.
Yes.
Okay.
Also stacked. It's also less, it's less footprint too on your site.
Right.
So if you're looking to expand, or if you're looking to, you know, expand the site around it with your other ones, you gotta think some of those double quarter, they sprawl, they're large schools, whereas a compact plan, we're minimizing the footprint.
That was, so two things, A, so that design is better if you want to put two schools on one track, that one right there.
Just gonna use less air.
Yeah, right. Question number two, stat. Of the three, what's the most functional for kids?
They're all functional.
No, I know, but yeah.
But from my perspective, that the third one is functional as far as staffing and, and monitoring our students. Usability, absolutely. Yes.
So when Greg Dirks is stirring up energy amongst kids, that's easier for you to do, right?
So, so the question is, is what do you want to go see in person? Okay.
What was the pre-K, we have pre-k program, and the rooms are gonna be a little bit bigger than your regular pre-k, you could have that e-gress, you have that bathroom.
Yeah.
You have to keep, you know, I, I'm just looking at it from, cause I'm pre-k kindergarten, right? And so you just can't rack stack the pre-k classroom like a kindergarten, first grade or second grade classroom, especially cause it's DHHS, it's not NC DPI. So you have to put DHHS in this conversation versus DPI.
You're
There's a different conversation in all this, Robbie, right?
Yes, you're exactly right. We're showing these classrooms are different than these, which are different than these. They're all different. So you're right, we would take that into account for sure.
Roger, you mentioned the other day, just in conversation, there was a school, it wasn't K, it wasn't pre-k three, but pre-k two, excuse me. Yeah, but where, where was that one located?
Sure.
That's right. Do we go look at that?
Um, you can look at anything you wanna go look at.
Sure. What's its design, Robbie? Is it like that?
Um, I know, I didn't think so.
It, it's not his design, it was a different, different firm.
Well, Robbie, on such you're having a second floor, do you have to have an elevator in this?
You do. You do. It's still less expensive to build vertically.
Right, right.
One story is more expen- uh, more expensive to build than a two-story.
What I worry about is if you put ten classrooms on one hallway and you have only one set of boys' bathrooms, one set of girls' bathrooms, that's what we face at our school now, is that they're queued up waiting to go to the bathroom, right? You know, is there a possibility to put two sets of latrines on each one of those hallways?
You would, yes.
I know your understanding, cause you're under, I'm, I'm looking at it, that I could be ten kindergarten classrooms into one set of bathrooms, and that's what I'm looking at right there.
We're probably gonna have, I, I don't know how old your school is, but schools today have a lot more bathrooms than older schools. I mean, so much so, we're always one, we always ask, do we actually need all these bathrooms?
You do.
Yeah. And we would, we would centralize that, that group toilet, so that, you know, the kids at one end of the wing aren't gonna have to go all the way to the other end. The, and the other question, so since pre-k kindergarten, first grade, we usually put bathrooms in the classroom, right? So the only one
Yeah, we only have, yes, the pre-k classroom and a handful of kindergarten classrooms.
Okay, okay. So that's a conversation though, you know, how far do we wanna go with that? I mean, DPI is gonna have some thoughts about it, but, you know, we might, we might end up with bathrooms in more of the classrooms, if that is something you wanna do. It's not
It's gonna be expensive.
From a cost perspective, bathrooms are expensive regardless of where you
Yes.
So if, if y'all are really leaning towards this, I think the, the school to go see is the one in Guilford County, which we actually had a little snippet of a picture in, um, on that, on that cover of the plan, John.
Yeah, right there.
That's, that's just a piece of that. So I would say that's a really good school to go look at. Claxton Elementary School. And that's one that we just finished about a year, it opened about a year ago. So if that, if that seems to be a general consensus, and we can change that, by the way, what we'll do, again, bonus points with, with DPI and the grant application, we'll probably go ahead and develop a quick plan based on that. It can change, it's nothing set in stone, but we wanna get something that we can submit to DPI.
Sounds good.
Is this all steel frame?
Um, not decided yet. Might be concrete block load bearing.
Okay.
Might be.
Free cast.
The angle might lean more towards steel frame though, because of the angle, cause everything's cut in a shop, it just comes out and gets welded together.
Okay.
All right.
Any, any other questions? We'll have lots of discussions with lots of questions moving forward, I'm sure. But
The only thing is
Particularly right here.
Yeah, just around, like, when, okay, so we want to go see a school, of course, sooner rather than later, which is great, but when do we need to start contacting landowners?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Before Anthony writes his article.
And, and the big thing is, Mr. Edgerton leaned towards it. Some of you have been Clintonians for your whole life. I have not, and I, I, I won't know these landowners as well as you might, and so sometimes it's a matter of if you know them, have the conversation, and you can tell immediately sometimes that it's just not a possibility. And there's no reason to then schedule a meeting, maybe with you and me and the landlord. And so if you can start having those conversations and just see if there's any interest, that's the start. And those of you that have been in the communities for a long time and know them, that's gonna help open the door and, and start those conversations. And then if it looks promising, then loop me in and we'll have some more conversations, and then we'll start compiling what we know, and then we can share that with Robbie and his team.
I would say, um, given all y'all's local knowledge, I would say just use these as kind of a go-by, about how much land you need, and just expand your minds to look at other sites. Um, the last thing in the world we ever want a property owner to think is that their site's the only one that's available, cause it's not. There are a lot of options out there. So y'all can just use this as a go-by, these are just starting points, and I, I may change my mind on this, and I'll let John know tomorrow, but I'd say let's not worry about the deadline as much. I, I don't think we can make a good decision by October third. I really don't think we can. And I don't wanna make a bad decision. I'd rather not make the decision and just be transparent with DPI about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And if I change my mind, I'll let John know tomorrow.
And I concur with Robbie, we don't need to rush into locating a site and, and lock ourselves into a site and have had conversations and, and like you alluded to, someone think that that's, that's our only option, cause that could do a lot of things with pricing and the discussions as they move forward. And it, it may be that we find out, once we do some geo-studies, that our preferred site may not be the site we can use. You just don't know until you do the full study, so.
All right, other questions of Robbie and his team? Mahon, Danny, any other questions?
Y'all just spilled information, I don't think y'all
Yeah.
Cause it don't matter what we throw at you, even if you wiggle your head a little bit, you should cook something.
It's not your first radio, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys. Mr. Lo, you have some other items while we have you?
We don't have buds, but
Yeah, I have some very brief information items. Um, we're still working through our recommendations from the clean classrooms for kids, lead-based paint testing we underwent. Um, we'll, we'll be tackling those, some of them are things we cannot do until we're out of school anyway, to meet the recommendations, but, uh, our team is working on those. Some project updates, the three hundred hall roof replacement at LC Car is substantially complete. Um, we wrapped up some punch list items, I just got Mr. Dirks his, uh, parking cones back that they walked away with just this week. So, and it was where they used some of our cones for staging over the summer, and when the crew picked up the staging, they just thought it was their cone. But we got those back. Um, the exterior wall at Sunset, the canopy at the front auditorium is complete, and it looks great, and that's gonna help us with that facility, make sure water inundation in the foyer doesn't happen, and that's complete. We've had some, uh, challenges, you've noticed the insulated wall panels are up on the other part of the wall. Um, the, um, windows, there was a subcontractor for windows, and for whatever reason, they took it upon themselves to wander away from our specifications. And they showed up with windows that were a little short for the opening, and they assured us, oh, we can, we can make it work, and we looked at that this week, and it's not going to work, and we denied that as a possibility, cause I've gotta consider this kind of renovation needs to last for the next thirty years, and I'm not gonna accept something subpar, and the engineers concurred with me. So we've turned that back over to the lead contractor to figure out what's next. We're gonna withhold payment on that portion until they resolve it. The problem is with window, um, manufacturing and getting that and the frames on site, we're delaying the project for, who knows, up to twelve weeks, um, which then puts the general contractor in liquidated damages, but we're gonna work through it, and we're gonna do what's quality and appropriate for the windows on that facility. Dislaid panels and the roofing have all been great, so. And I think that's all I had for updates, information items. Any questions for me?
Any questions for John? If not, we'll move.
The front of the auditorium looks great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Now we're gonna move on to Mr. Vane. Have our auditor here. Let me just go ahead and introduce, all right, Adam, it's on your brother. Thank you for being patient.
I think I can sum us up, uh, in one sentence, you didn't spend all your money, because it sounds like you might be spending, needing it over the next few years. So in front of you, I have
Before we get started, hold up one second, I fixed and check out, do you want?
So in front of you, you have a paper clipped set of statements and a three-page letter. It's a little different than the normal presentation of a nice bound blue book, and, uh, it, this says draft on the front of it. So, um, this year, the federal government is a little bit behind in issuing compliance supplements, uh, for federal programs. They are still in a draft stage. I cannot finalize an audit report until we have final supplements, and those supplements basically tell us, uh, what new step we test on Title I or EC. The drafts are out, there's no new changes, but until they actually finalize them, I don't want to date these financial statements until after the date they finalize their supplements. So what I anticipate is, these financial statements, the numbers won't change, those are what they are. If for some reason, from the draft to the final version, they tell me that child nutrition has to spend ten percent of their funds on pudding, then we would test that, but that's, those are the types of steps that are not finalized in these compliance supplements, nothing to do with the financial statements or the numbers. So what I anticipate happening is the only thing that'll change on here will be the date of issuance, and then I'll send nice bound blue copies, uh, with the brand new date on it. So, uh, so we are going over a draft format, but, um, we can't wait around for the federal government forever, so we go to these, uh, meetings, this is the second draft, uh, I've had to present, and I'm probably gonna have to do another one in a couple of weeks, cause again, I just don't know when they'll finalize those supplements. Um, the three-page letter, as usual, is just to let you know that the audit win is planned, no disagreements with management on how to apply accounting principles, uh, no differences in opinion on, uh, any of the items that we tested or any of the disclosures or the numbers within these financial statements. There is a one new item in there, um, there was a new GASB implemented, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, they issue, uh, all of the, the requirements to make these financial statements as transparent as possible, and they, uh, issued GASB one oh one, which required us to value sick leave and incorporate this into your financial statements. We've always looked at annual leave as a liability, not at the fund level, but at this net position level that we've talked about before, um, for your govern, for your business type fund like the child nutrition, net position and fund balance are one and the same, so we do have an increase in a liability in that fund. But this new GASB doesn't affect your fund balance in the general fund, it's really when you take your funds, add all your assets, the value of your buildings, or the value of your future buildings and those liabilities. Sick leave is now a component of that. Sick leave had, is earned. And it is oftentimes half of it paid out. So there is a ratio of what ends up getting paid out by people using their sick leave versus what gets transferred to the retirement system towards years of service. So we're going to eventually have a five year average of what that sick leave payout percentage is. Your total sick leave that you've been tracking for years is now valued and then a ratio of what is planned to be paid out or what could be paid out estimated versus what gets transferred to orbit. The paid out portion becomes a liability in your statement. So GASB 101, a new accounting principle applied. So that's outlined in that three page letter. But everything else pretty standard and, and no troubles performing the audit. So if you would turn to page one, again, you hire us to conduct the audit and issue our opinion over the financial statements. And that opinion is based on the accuracy of the statements, not on how well you did as far as making money or losing money or using money, but just about the accuracy of the statements. A lot of our discussion ends up being about whether it was a good year, bad year, what you did with fund balance. But ultimately the goal is to get an accurate set of statements. So page one is our opinion letter. And in the first section are the opinion paragraphs that state that we believe these financial statements are accurate. Is considered a clean, unmodified opinion letter. There's also a note at the bottom of that page one addressing the change in accounting principle for that GASB 101. But again, clean, unmodified opinion letter. We ended up with no findings, no internal control deficiencies. And again, no, no problems issuing these statements and, and issuing that opinion. So if you would turn to exhibit three, page 14. And again, we've talked before about what I think are the most important exhibits. And we skipped exhibit one and two because that is the school system presented at that net position level. You are not a company. You do not have the ability to borrow against the value of your buildings. A large pension and post employment benefit that is actually booked in within that net position isn't even your liability. It's a state liability. What you care about is how much fund balance you have available. What are your assets and liabilities within those funds and what did fund balance do as far as go up or down? So again, for me, the board management exhibit three, the balance sheet for your governmental funds, probably the one of the most important exhibits right behind exhibit four. Exhibit three is a balance sheet for all of your governmental funds. The first column, your general fund, your local fund, total fund balance at the bottom of that first column, $4,415,000, a decrease of 253,000 from the prior year. That's about as close to break even as you can get. When you look at your other source of local funds, the other special revenue fund, that fund balance of $1,756,000 had an increase of 51,000 in fund balance. So combined you use $200,000 of fund balance. And again, with, if you've got plans to do some improvements, to do some construction, to do some purchasing of furniture and equipment, all the things that come with a new building, being able to break even while you're anticipating applying for a needs based grant, I think is where you would want to be. So you have 4.4 million of fund balance on hand in general, 1.7 million in other special revenues. Your fund balance and capital outlay is just $67,000, an increase of 5,000. And that's just because of the reimbursement nature of that fund. You really only make money on sales tax refunds and selling, selling equipment in, in old equipment. So increase of $5,000 in fund balance there. And then at your schools, across all your schools, you have 431,000 of fund balance on hand, a decrease of 34,000 from last year. And that's for all of the athletics and clubs, all the activity at each of those school sites. Any questions about this balance sheet? If not, page 16 is the income statement that shows those changes that I just rattled off, those changes in fund balance. And again, the first column, the general fund, this houses your county appropriation, $3,851,000. That was an increase of 140,000 from last year. Your supplemental taxes are included in that other revenue source and those were 111,000 higher this year. So you had, you had $250,000 of new general fund revenue. And still, you know, use $200,000 of fund balance. So that, that kind of just gives you an idea of just if whether you have a good year or a bad year as far as revenue increases from the county or from those taxes, just how important they are into that overall usage of whether do we break even? Do we use 200,000? Do we use 400,000 or do we add 200,000? So you had $250,000 of new revenues in the general fund. And at the bottom of that fund, you can see after all expenses, the net change in fund balance was minus 253,441. Your state public school fund does not carry fund balance, but that is the major source of revenues. $24.2 million from the state. That was an increase of 216,000 from last year. Your federal grants funds, you spent out the last of your education stabilization, those COVID-19 funds. 4.5 million there. There was about 2.2 million of that was those, the last allotments of the COVID-19 funds. Last year you had over, over $6 million of federal funds. This coming year for 25, 26, you're looking at more like 2.3 million of federal funds. So again, all, all of those allotments are gone. The last bits of those were spent on capital type projects, one time projects, not reoccurring. So a lot of the burden on those federal grants funds when they first came out that were used for programs, reoccurring expenditures has already been shifted over to, you know, to your local sources, anything that you continue to, to pay locally. Your other special revenue fund collected 1.9 million dollars. One of the key changes in this fund was the fact that you no longer had those federal funds to charge indirect cost on. And so your indirect cost revenue went down 208,000. With all those COVID-19 funds, you could charge indirect costs to that program. It was a revenue source in a local fund. And that, that decrease of $208,000 is really kind of offsets the increases you had in county appropriation and supplemental taxes. Capital outlay was a, a small year this year with just $222,000 of revenue. And then at the individual schools, they collected over 800,000 of revenue and spent 850,000. Again, that right towards the bottom, the net change in fund balance across the entire spectrum there, total of $231,000 of fund balance used, bringing your total governmental fund balance to 6,670,000. At the end of the day, that's just a drop in the bucket on a cost of a new elementary school. You know, those, those needs based grants have county matches and, and hopefully your county will, will, will meet those matches to save some of that fund balance. Because with those, with a new schools does come additional costs, additional staff. So again, I think you're in great shape for, you know, that future with having $6 million of fund balance on hand. Probably the highest it's been in, in 10 years. So yeah, again, a solid financial position and only utilizing 230,000 of it in one year. So. Any questions there?
I've got one.
Yep.
General fund balance of 4,415,619.
Yep.
Which is the major number we look at in terms of the health of the district is, would that be a fair statement?
Yes.
All right. So knowing that, and we use 253,000 of it approximately. Is it fair to say total expenditures of the general fund as well of the 6,476, 686? In your professional opinion as a auditor, what percentage of those expenditures is a healthy percentage to carry year over year?
Every school district is different. There, there is an economy of scale of what a percentage means when it comes to a district with 2,000 kids, 8,000 kids or 40,000 kids.
Right.
And so there is not one set percentage.
Yes, sir.
Johnston County has at one point, $30 million of fund balance, but that is nothing compared to their $400 million budget and their $100 million that comes.
Yes, sir.
And their county is not comfortable with them having more than 30 million because that number is just a big number. And it's five times your number.
Right.
So it is different. It's not, there's no set clean comparison.
So Matt, it would, it would, would it be, could you give a, a percentage of what you would qualify as a healthy financial position for districts of our size?
There is a district your size that I presented to last night that has 1.8 million dollars of fund balance in their general fund.
And there's.
They are looking at how do we cut cost right now to save $400,000 this coming year and next year so that we stop using fund. So somewhere between 1.8 and 4.6 is like a equilibrium. So.
Are there, are their general expenditures roughly comparable?
Very, very similar size.
Okay.
And, and very similar revenue structure.
That answers my question. Thank you.
So 4.6 quite healthy, 1.8 using two, 300,000 and knowing, one thing, knowing state budget's not even out yet. Will there be a 3% raise and a 2% increase in your revenues, leaving a 1% increase that you have to fund? These are all, all things that I, I think a lot of districts have not worried about as much in the last four or five years with those COVID funds. And go ahead.
Well, and I think you would, I don't know. I'm asking, I guess, but like if you're dependent upon federal funds to balance your budget, you're in a financial crisis anyway.
You are, but, but when, when districts were receiving more money than they knew what to do with.
Of course.
It, it lent to, it lent to a lot of news stories in the last year.
Of course. And some that have never made the news.
Yeah. And some that have never made the news.
Last question. Wes, Dr. J, you may could answer this better, but knowing that, and this is good news, that our county came up with a new funding model for, for our school district in Sampson County. Which generates somewhat of a considerable increase. Dr. J, where would that? I guess for fiscal year ending June 30, 26, where will that additional, call it a half a million bucks, just to make the math easy? Where would that show up?
I think it's hard to say right now because as Adam pointed out, we don't have a budget.
Right.
And so it's hard to, to determine what we're going to have to pay for staffing. And when staffing makes up 88, 90% of your budget, it's just so hard to say.
Well, no, but I mean, sorry. Button ain't working. The majority of our salaries, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm just, would be laid out in the state public school column, correct? Our salary expense.
I'll say.
Most of.
I'll say the majority.
Yeah. So I mean, yeah, are there some paid out of local? Quite sure there are. But primarily your salary expense is in that state public school column. So the additional revenue from the county would show up in this general column, correct?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. But one thing we have to be mindful of is, and we, and you guys approved this in consent, is for us to look at the roofing at Sampson Middle School.
Which is about a half a million bucks for we receive.
Right.
Or will receive.
And that's only half.
The roof.
The roof.
Correct.
So we've got another half of the roof. So, so you can think about that.
Yeah. Yeah. Being a major, major blow to this number, right?
And there, there would be various factors in that too. And I think we're doing it the right way is, you know, pay for half of it. You got the majority of it from your, the new support from the new regime at the county level. And then maybe you can go back into that for the other side a year later. Right.
It's hard to be mentioned to us and we're hopeful that that will be able to, you know, to do that as well. But yes.
So again, a, a strong financial position. But we, we've had that conversation year after year, poison yourself during those times of increased federal funds to live within your means so that when you came out of those times, you were still living within your means and and again, $250,000 usage of fund balance across governmental funds. You, you could, you could sustain that for a lot of years if it was just that simple of math and unfortunately not having a state budget. And it, it's, it's not just that the state public school fund, again, which funds you to the 224 million. It's not just here's the dollars. It's a combination of here's positions and here's dollars and balancing those and what, what increases, you know, will, will factor into those positions and those dollars. It's a, it's a moving target. Ties to enrollment, ties to low wealth. It ties to the low wealth calculation of the whole state and everybody else's timing of when they do reevaluations. And there might be a spike and a dip in your low wealth money over the next five years, just because of where you fall in the spectrum of your reevaluation and your low wealth calculations compared to other counties. So having the ability to weather those dips and, and, and not just there padding your fund balance. Again, living within your means, using, it, it affords you now, like every decision is, it's, it's easy. Do we want to use fund balance for it or not? And when you're, when you're break even, every decision that is above and beyond, you know, what you funded last year is, do we, do we dip into fund balance for this?
And last question or comment. So this being public, right? Set or open session? And it's a pretty clear indicator that we're a responsible steward of taxpayer dollars. Otherwise you'd have to say something different here. Right. So I guess my thing is we've talked about a little bit, you know, in conversation about presenting our stewardship of tax dollars in appropriate manner to our local constituents to show them, hey, look, we're, you know, we need a roof and we're just not randomly asking you for it without considerable thought and, and planning. So would that be appropriate to do?
So because you charge a supplemental tax, absolutely. It's, it is not just the county's decision that everybody in the county has to live with. This is the tax rate. You, you're, you're charging your residents an additional tax so that they can go to school and pay for the inefficiency of running a city district versus a county district that might have 10,000 kids that, that, that supplemental tax absolutely goes to that decision. And a, a higher sense of financial responsibility to those funds.
Within reason, we could share, I mean, not drilling into weeds, but we could share this information.
These are public.
Yeah.
Once we, once, once that draft stamp comes off.
Status.
Once that's right.
Stamp comes off.
Once, once this draft comes off, it actually goes on to the federal audit clearinghouse and anyone in the country can pull this set of financial statements to look at it.
Thank you.
Yep. So after that, we have some schedules that just show you how the difference between change in fund balances from difference and change in net position. Also how you get from fund balance to your net position, as well as some budget versus actual comparisons, which yielded no budget violations. Again, state law requires you to create a budget and not to exceed the expenditures on that budget. So your budget might have a little bit of fluff on it because Emily doesn't want to get written up for having a budget violation, but it is driven based on expenses. So your, your budget versus actual expenditure side is what would create a statutory violation on budget. So there were none of those and that's. So uh there were none of those and that's exhibit six uh for all of those uh governmental funds. Page twenty-two is probably the second most important set of exhibits. Exhibit seven and eight is a balance sheet and income statement for your one business type fund, your child nutrition fund. Um, this fund, net position and fund balance are one in the same. They, they actually have their pension liability recorded directly in the fund. There is a value of their assets, their kitchen equipment that gets depreciated over time. So instead of looking at your net position at the bottom there of eight hundred and forty-six thousand, the to- the top number, cash and cash equivalents on hand is the more important number. You can appropriate or spend your cash minus your current liabilities. That's how you come up with the fund balance you can appropriate there, not based on that eight forty-six. So uh cash on hand, two point one million dollars, a decrease of a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars from last year. The prior year twenty twenty-four decrease was a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Your cash on hand has been built up over fifteen plus years of operating child nutrition using um uh source staffing, non-employees. You were able to make money doing that, uh contracted services. You've now moved over to actual employees. You currently have a mix of contracts and staff on hand. Um, I think when we were looking at year end, it's, I think it's a ratio of like twenty employees to fourteen contracted workers. So you, some kind of mix down the middle. Um, but that is creating this usage of cash. You, you have uh smaller schools, you've smaller kitchens, there's only so many uh students to serve meals to. Food costs have gone up, your staffing cost has gone up because now you've got employees with benefits. And so um luckily, there is a increase in the lunch reimbursement rate that's gonna be pretty significant, ten percent. Um, that's, that, that's a, a good source of revenue. But you are in a position where you are actually using your cash on hand, you have plenty to use. Uh but one of the challenges of smaller districts this size is at some point, when this cash runs out of, runs out, the shortfall is paid for out of local. It's, you have to pay for it locally. Um, your revenue is on page twenty-three. Food sales, where you actually sell food, hundred and twelve thousand bucks, a decrease of sixteen thousand. The main source of revenue is that federal reimbursements, two million four hundred and seven thousand. That's a decrease of eighty-five thousand from last year. The driver here is that reimbursement rate, which is gonna go up for lunches. It goes up a little bit for breakfast, but it's the main, mainly lunches. But the main driver there is participation, getting the kids in the line, serving them their meals so that you can get that federal reimbursement. So two point four million, again, a decrease of eighty-five thousand. That's the bulk of that additional cash usage from twenty fourteen, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five um of about sixty thousand bucks. So um you're uh, you're in the same scenario that, again, a lot of small districts are in, that it is expensive to feed those children when operating smaller schools, not having a two thousand kid high school or a ten thousand kid uh K through three school. So it, it uh um, that um the, this fund, again, years from now, you're, you will be in this direction looking at, again, the same problems that a lot of districts your size do, that you have not been used to worried about because you've had um some real cost-saving measures in the form of salaries uh versus contracted labor. So.
Is that really the only way to drive that cash and cash equivalent balance?
When, when, when there's a, uh, when your ADM is at a level that is, you know, your size, yeah. It's, it, it's, it's expenses rather than revenue. You can't um, you, you're already CEP, so getting, getting those kids through the line. Um, there are other uh programs, snack programs, after-school meal programs. Uh they be, they are labor-intensive on some of those. They can drive um revenues up, but they also drive food costs up. Uh the number one is, is, is salaries and food costs.
So, so really, uh food costs, obviously, but the, the only way to drive the cash balance to grow it is what really net anyway, is what we were doing, which is contracted versus.
Right, but hard to compete.
Yeah.
At salary levels um and, and in the current environment. Um, minimum wages, what, where they are. So um, yeah, so alternatively, some, some, some combination of, of staff and contracted labor and then it boosting participation or keeping participation high. Uh those are the two key factors for uh minimizing cash usage.
May I add something? Um, the major difference between five years ago and now is the fifteen dollar an hour difference. We went from eleven dollar employees to fifteen dollars an hour plus benefits. So that was a major change. Also with food costs. Those lovely wings that our children enjoy went from sixty dollars a box to a hundred and forty dollar a box. So we are receiving changes in prices daily. Um, so to combat all of that, we are using our commodities. So we, we purchase cheese, peanuts, different things from USDA to cut our cost. So we get those things for free in order to make our products. So on a box, I'm saving thirty or forty dollars for um peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. So now we're seeing a combination of employees that we're contracting out to cut costs. But we're also looking at how to cut the food costs and that's how we're gonna do it. We receive approximately a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars from USDA for goods. And so if we can cut the cost for our big ticket items such as our entrees, then we can see revenue being increased, if that makes sense.
It totally does. It, it, is there a way to? So going through USDA for supplementary items, products, I guess the proper way to say that.
For example, um with our pizza, and we did, we've done this this year. Um, we purchased cheese from USDA through our allotment. So the cheese poundage is free.
Okay.
So we have to contract through a vendor in order to make the pizza. So they use the cheese that we received for free in order to make the pizza.
Right.
So they cut the cost of the box of pizza by forty dollars.
Because of our savings on the cheese.
Because we're giving them the cheese to make it.
Yes.
But the issue that we're running in now, because we've been doing this for about three years and the issues that we've always come into is, I'm giving you the cheese, why can't I get the product? So when we order the product, the product's not there. Um, so then they give us a substitute that they're not cutting the cost for.
Right, because we didn't give them the cheese.
We didn't give them the cheese for the substitute.
Gotcha.
So we're running into a lot of that.
Okay.
So this year, I took a proactive stance on that, so we're direct shipping. So the product will come to our central warehouse and our drivers will distribute it to ensure that we're getting the product. So we're cutting out the middleman. So we're trying to work on that aspect because food cost is astronomical. And at four dollars and twenty-seven cent per meal, that's what we get for labor, for everything to make the meal and to run the facilities, that's what we get for lunch. So where are you gonna go around here and eat a full-course lunch for four dollars and twenty-seven cents?
Can't do that at home.
You can't. And then the federal government cut our additional funds for these pricing increases. We used to get sixty to seventy thousand dollars extra um because number one, we're CEP and then the cost of living really is going up. So we don't get that anymore.
That was the supply chain assistance. That was the, a temporary fix on the fact that reimbursement rates have not been going up with the inflation cost. It wasn't, the, the change in cash usage just wasn't a salary issue, it was salaries and food costs and the reimbursement rates not come uh going up with inflation. This ten percent increase in the lunch price was a year and a half, two years too late. Like, I mean, that, hopefully, it's another ten percent next year to really address uh cost of food. If you look at exhibit eight, yeah, she was talking about the commodities. You can't just go buy all of your food, food through commodities, you're actually limited. So when you look at your food cost, you purchase food of one million, one thirty-four and you got donated commodities of a hundred and ninety-five thousand. That's a, you're, you're limited on how much you can get from commodities.
So would, would, and I'm not trying to get too into weeds, I'm just trying to understand, would, would, like, donated commodities be local? Food sources?
No, yeah, USDA food.
Just you through, you've got, if it's donated commodities, it's got, it's through USDA.
It is through USDA and they do partner with local farms to offer fresh items as well that we, we can get once a month. Um, but fruits are expensive, but what's more expensive to us is your entree items. And so we're trying to combat that. We can, we can, well, they provide frozen vegetables as well, frozen um fruits, so on and so forth, that helps. But what we're looking into now, which takes a lot of work and that's fine if we're gonna get the bang for our buck, is using those for processing for entrees.
Right. So, but we can't, as a school district, go straight to the, we can't go straight to a produce uh packer that's also generating off the product. Like, for example, sweet potato packer, right? He's packing sweet potatoes. The, the quality potatoes are going to the grocery store, steakhouse or whatever, but his outputs, there's a puree or different things that could be a supplemental item to reduce the cost of an entree. We've got to go through USDA for that. We can't contract directly with the local business. That, right?
We do contract with local businesses, but they have to go through the, the co-op that we're in. Um, and we have to bid it out. We normally bid it out each year, it's not gonna happen this time. Um, because I'm going to rebid produce next year. Um, so we put that out there, they have to go through the co-op in order to be approved. And from there, we can offer them the bid process in order to see if they're the number one candidate. No, they, they have to be certified um in order to do that um through the co-op.
So after that, after those exhibits, there's a cash flow statement. There are uh pages and pages of footnotes showing you all of your fixed asset roll forwards, your what's in the accounts receivable and payable, a lot of information about pension and OPEB calculations, but from the actuaries. All of your accounting principles, including your new Gatsby one oh one sick leave. Um, but a couple pages that I just want to point out, uh sixty-one, this is your general fund with a little bit more detail than just a one column on exhibit four. So you can actually see the breakout of those other revenues. And you can see that your supplemental school taxes were two million, two hundred and thirteen thousand. Collect eighty-eight thousand of fines and forfeitures, a little bit of tuition and fees and fifteen thousand miscellaneous. Uh and again, just a little bit more detail, but the same information that was on exhibit four for that general fund. And finally, page sixty-six starts three more letters. So we don't just audit the numbers, the financial statements, we also do a compliance audit. And then we also issue a letter over your internal controls. So uh we come in here, back to those federal supplements. Those are compliance steps, making sure you spent uh your, your Title I funds and EC funds according to those programs. So page sixty-six and sixty-eight are two letters that read the same, but one is for state programs and one is for federal programs. And basically, it states that, in our opinion, you complied with all of the major program requirements for your major state and major federal programs that we audited this year. This year, we did child nutrition as a major federal program. Your last bit of COVID nineteen funds and EC, those were your three major federal programs. And for on the state side, the state public school fund, you know, the majority of that twenty-four million dollars, we have to audit that every year for compliance. We also looked at your CTE program, uh because that's a separate state grant. And again, uh on both those state and federal, no compliance findings, no question costs, no money to send back to DPI. The third letter is over internal controls. Um, we noted no internal control deficiencies that we consider significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the controls over compliance or over financial reporting. So across the board, again, a, a clean audit, um a, a, a good set of financial statements as far as uh the numbers are concerned. Um, page seventy-six, this is the list of those state and federal programs. And you can see that um the total COVID nineteen education stabilization funds, two million, two hundred and ninety thousand. Again, the last bit of those COVID allotments uh spent out, again, a lot of it on um uh capital-type program or projects, HVAC, yeah. So again, uh I think, I think we've uh you know, again, kinda talked about the, the highlights and the summary, but, but again, a, a, a good financial position. Not a lot of movement um in usage or gaining a fund balance. So um, you know, poised to, to, to make those new decisions as you come. As, as the roofs need to go up, uh you can decide, you know, if you can afford them or not. Any questions?
Any questions for I, Adam? Any other questions?
You guys had a busy meeting.
Thank you, Evan. You're welcome to stay a little bit longer because we're gonna be here for a while.
Gotta go, gotta go finish someone else's audit.
Thank you so much. Alrighty. Y'all still with us? Alright, so Dr. Carr, Cheryl, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five accountability.
Cheryl Kimbrough, the accountability director, is gonna present.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Okay, I will try to keep this as painless as possible. It's so interesting. Um, okay, so just to go over uh things that I do each year is um to just give you some um information just on how things are handled with accountability. So we have reporting data, which is everybody that tested, no business rules applied. So if the kid took a test, it's reported. And then accountability measures are um school performance grades, best, based on the accountability model. And those use business rules that are applied. So partial enrollment um goes into that. And then if a student is a newcomer to the United States in their first year, then their scores are not counted. Um, so, no, you're good, go ahead. Uh, college and career readiness, CCR, are your levels fours and fives, that's what the federal programs use. And then grade level proficiency is levels threes, fours and fives, and that's what school performance grade uses in Oklahoma. So that's what I'm focusing on for the rest of this. So I'm not gonna read numbers out to you unless you ask for something in particular. So I'm not gonna read numbers out to you unless you ask for something in particular. I did print my copy out so I could read it a little bit better, even with my glasses. So we had um for reading at third, fourth and fifth, we um had third grade went down some, fourth and fifth went up. Math, um, fifth up, third and fourth down a bit. Reading for the middle school, we have um an increase for sixth and seventh and then down for eighth. And for math at the middle school, um, an increase in sixth and seventh and then down in eighth. And then we have the high school, um, English two went down a bit, math one went down some, and then math three saw some significant increase. And then science and biology are separated this year because we had new standards and so we had a new test. So this is our first year with scores for the new test. And when we had our state webinar, they said that they were going to just use this as a starting point and not really compare it to the previous years. Um, so uh those are our beginning points. Yeah. And then they put growth in there. So um, for ACT 11th grade, this is reported. So we had an increase in our composite, which is 17 now. It switched again um last year. And so we had an increase in that because the what also helped that is going from 19 as a composite to be proficient to 17. Work keys um went down some to 61.5. And our cohort graduation rates, we're staying pretty steady on those. Um, 77 for the four-year cohort and then 80.3 is what our five-year cohort is right now. We actually have a data correction that I submitted last week um that we're waiting for it to be approved and processed. We had one student at the high school that was a fifth-year senior who graduated. And when that's approved, then we'll actually be at 80.7 for the fifth year. Um, EL progress is based on our access test results, um, and those are our students that are English language learners. Um, and that number of students grows repeatedly. You can see this is our total number of ELS. So last year, our count was 473 that we tested. That's not our just our head count. That's just the ones that we tested. Um, so we get numbers, go back forward, sorry. Um, we get numbers based on who met progress. So they have a goal if they met that goal. Then number of students who exited, and then we get the overall number. So the exit criteria was changed. So instead of them having to have a composite of 4.8, now it's 4.5. And so we had um 55 students to exit services last year and 126 that met progress. So we are continuing to to raise that up. Okay. Um, then we wanted to include, Dr. Johnson asked me to include the AP testing scores. So we had 83 tests taken. Uh, we have some students that take more than one AP class, so that's not necessarily 83 kids. Um, and then 62 out of those 83 were proficient on their AP exam, which is which is really good. So and then this is a comparison just with us and with the state um broken down by grade level. And then the EOCs are at the end. Do you want to go back? Okay, go back. And it's the difference with what we have versus the state. So if we were below them or above them. You good? Okay. Then um this is the this is the southeast region. Um, the state is across the top where the second row. And then those are the districts that are in the southeast region. Green means that you were at or above the state level. And then the next one is all the city school systems. And same thing applies. The top row is for the state, second row is Clinton City. And then the other city school systems are below that. And you have access to this, I'm pretty sure, the PowerPoint, so you can see the numbers a lot larger. So moving to school performance grades, um, it is 80% performance, 20% growth, and we are on a 15-point scale. Then for the indicators in grades three through eight, you're looking at your EOG scores for reading and math. Um, math one scores for eighth grade, science EOG scores for fifth and eighth, English learner progress. And then your 20% growth is for your reading, math and science. And the high school has the same things subject wise, but then it also adds the ACT work keys com combination. Then the four-year cohort rate, only the four-year, not the five-year. English learner progress and then growth for ELA and math at the high school. So the AWA is the ACT work keys and ACT combination indicator. So we look at the seniors, the graduates that graduated that year. So we looked at the kids who graduated last year. The ones who were concentrators and took the work keys test during their 12th grade year. If they were proficient or during their 11th grade year, if they were proficient on the ACT. If they were proficient on one of those tests, then they counted in our um proficient numerator for this indicator. So those two tests are combined for the school performance grade purposes. And reminder that the work keys, the kids only count for us if they are a concentrator. We always have a small handful that we think are going to be concentrators, so we go ahead and test them. But then something happens schedule wise or they don't pass the class. And so those kids don't count um as a concentrator. So this is literally just only the concentrators and then everybody that takes the ACT in 11th grade. It's two now. Mm-hmm. Four before and then it switched to two. Um, and so our school performance grades are listed here. We had uh three schools that met growth and of course Butler and Elsie Carr are feeder schools to Sunset, so they get the scores from Sunset. And then um the middle school and the high school. Our federal designations, um, TSI additional targeted support. So we had subgroups at each school that we just are giving targeted support to to try to get those subgroups up. Um, it was the students with disabilities at uh Carr, Butler, Sunset and Sampson Middle. And then for the high school, it was ELS. Questions?
Sure. What's the state dropout rate for graduation rate?
So we don't have the one for last year yet. That report is usually due I think October or November. So and then they usually put it out in February-ish. So I don't have the one for 2425 yet.
So what was 23, 24, I guess, because we're averaging around 77?
That's for the cohort graduation rate. The dropout rate is calculated differently. And I do not know that number off the top of my head, but I can get you that number. For the dropout rate? Of the graduation. Well, and one thing that we are, and I I think I've said this before, but one of the things that helps with our CGR is keeping track of the kids. And that's something that I've tried to really push since I've been here. Because as long as we can find out if they went to an online platform, they may have moved to Florida and moved to wherever, but if they joined another school, enrolled in another school, and I can get the correct kind of documentation, then they come out of that cohort. So um we I try to beat the bushes as much as possible. I email parents with whatever is still in Infinite Campus from when they were with us. It might bounce back. I might get an answer. Sometimes we get um some additional evidence and sometimes we don't. But that's a good chunk of them is just trying to follow up with where they are.
So what constitutes a year as far as like how many days do we have to be in there all?
For partial enrollment. You talk about partial enrollment, counting in school performance grades, yes. So if you're at um grades three through eight, they're year-long classes. So a student has to be enrolled more than half of the school year. More than half. So first and our our semesters are the same now. So they've got to be all of first semester and part of second. Um, and then so our kids that come to us during second semester, uh, they're not going to count. So and that ends up being um a lot of our uh like our migrant students that tend to come and we have some rotation on where they go. Uh, those don't, they are reported because they test, but they don't count in the school performance grade. And then for high school courses that are semester, it's more than half of the semester. And they pull those dates straight from Infinite Campus.
Um, there we go. Last week, we had a um CAO meeting and at within CAT. And the results that they shared, it says graduation rates for four-year cohort graduation rose to 87.7%, the third year of consecutive increases.
And that's the state for cohort graduation rate. And then the dropout rate.
I don't know about that.
Yeah, I'll look that up and I'll get that to you. Issue is calculated differently. Any other questions?
So the two graph that way, yeah, the those two. Is that a fair assessment? In terms, I'm asking, I'm in term and in comparison to our peers, is that the easiest way to compare us in terms of results, factual results?
If you're talking about the number of students, that would be a different group. There's not a report that I have that pulls economic and demographic, all that kind of stuff.
I I jotted these down that I think are comparable to us. Tell me if I'm wrong. Ashboro City, Weldon, Roanoke Rapids, Whiteville, Hickory, Craven, Duplin, Green, Jones, Lenore, Sampson, Wayne.
I'm not saying no. I want to definitely be consideration. Craven is military, basically all military. Um, and their socioeconomic status is much different than ours.
Well, New in New Bern, it is in New in New Bern, it is, but out in the county is it probably isn't.
West Coast.
Yeah.
That one, one section and they have two large.
High schools. Yeah.
Weldon for sure. Do it yourself. Thomasville City for sure.
I didn't, I I thought about writing that one down, but so I did Wayne. And I'm talking demog, I'm talking how I get, I should have clarified. I apologize. How do our results compare to our peers? And by peers, I mean districts that look like us, right? So Wayne, yeah, Wayne, Sampson, Lenore, Jones, Green, Duplin. I said Craven, but we'll but I'll keep it because we're closer than them. Hickory, Whiteville, Roanoke Rapids, Weldon, Ashboro City.
Ashboro City may be a small stretch, but the rest of that majority, oh, yes. Hickory, no.
Hickory, no.
Hickory's gonna have a strong socioeconomic.
So and I'm not a test score expert, but I'm I'm going to use, oh, Beaver Dam redneck, layman's turn. Green is good.
Green's above the state.
Above the equal to or above what the state number is.
For for purposes of these two graphs, green is I mean, you're at you're you're better than the state average. So I'm gonna say green is good for discussion of these two graphs.
Right.
I in comparison to our peers that I just talked about, we're low, we're one, we're one notch below Ashboro, one above Weldon, one below Roanoke Rapids, we're tied with Whiteville, we're one below Hickory, one below Craven, which if that if it's if that county is that much different, then that's not bad. We're above Duplin, one below Green, two below Jones, tied with Lenore, two below Sampson and pretty two above Wayne. So I guess my question is it should that be a cause for concern? What are we doing to, and I know this is a broad question, but I mean, what are we doing to? I hate to even ask this, but and I know it's a snapshot of one year, but like, how did, has Jones outperforming Clinton?
Well, actually, I I think the the snapshot that you pointed to showed very close comparison into all those districts. Uh, you were one above, one below, two above, two below. Uh, and and you're looking at green only. I think a better comparison would be EOG performance, EOC performance.
Split up.
Uh, and looking at just EOG and just EOC because that's that's predominantly um, you know, what you need to look at.
Which would be? EOG, also, okay, which would be that?
So right now it's EOGs and EOCs combined. And then it has reading, all of reading, all of math, all of science, then the EOCs.
Yes, ma'am.
So it would be breaking that down, which I can do that.
No, no, I guess so. My question is, the EOG, EOC column, where the state average is 55, I we're right below that at 47. I, does that column, is that a summary of all the columns to the right of it?
No.
No.
All of these are, all of these are different markers, but some markers are easier to get than others, like math course rigor. There should not be a single district that's not green. If you're if you're not green on math course rigor, there's a problem.
So everything to the left, I see what you're saying now. So everything to the right of that column.
To my right.
Yes.
Column is a sum, that that column is a summary of.
Of those, yes. He's talking about the ones, the reading, all those, but the ones to the left are not part of that column. Yes.
So look, if we do that real quick, and I, we can't drill down to the numbers, but I mean, we're we're because I don't want to waste a bunch of people's time, but it is.
You're not wasting time talking about accountability.
Uh, we're well above Dublin, well above Green, well above, well, we're above Lenore. Above Sampson. And above, make sure I'm right. Above Wayne. Right. And then if you go to the city one, we said one, we are above Conapolis, we're right there with Hickory, we're below Whiteville. Below, we're above Lexington, we're way above Tom's field, Roanoke Rapids, we're below Weldon, we're above Ashboro City, we're above. Uh, so I mean, yeah, we're, I that I guess that was how are we doing and how are we compared? If the numbers, and I know the numbers, you know, there's various things the state doesn't take into account that we wish they did. But it's
I think I think a better way to look at this, uh, Mr. Hales is uh a is through a growth report. Uh, because the numbers are what the numbers are. Uh, and of course, um, it's been statistically proven that the numbers are basically a comparison of your socioeconomic status.
Yeah.
Uh, there was a report several years ago, this tech that was titled, A stands for affluent. A doesn't stand for a performance composite that you're doing well. It stands for how affluent you are. Um, and so that's that's the number. And that's what, if there's one number on here that I tell you to look at, it was that one column that that we just looked at. But we had a growth report. Uh, that's in my section, uh, because this uh Cheryl and I uh decided to to I would present that section. But Cheryl and I have found what we think are some uh glowing errors in the growth report. Um, and for example, I'll I'll show it to you in just a few moments. Um, we had a, we had our AIG subgroup. At every single one of those tests above, that's well, met growth, met growth, met growth.
Everything was green.
Third grade reading, fourth grade reading, fifth grade reading, sixth grade reading, seventh grade reading, eighth grade reading, English. Third grade reading, fourth grade reading, fifth grade reading, sixth grade reading, seventh grade reading, eighth grade reading, English two. Every single one of them, green. The overall marker for A I G did not meet, red. How can you be green at every single test, every single grade level? And did not meet. So that, I had Cheryl send that question to a gentleman by the name of Paul Marshall, who worked for D P I, but he's the SAS contact, uh, because I think y'all know, I, I like accountability and I like math. And we have talked to my cabinet and, uh, you know, Sheila's looked at some things and she's, uh, you know, been a principal and all of this is, the growth reports are all comparisons of mean averages over time. And so when, when I'm looking at a child, yes, I'm looking at that child's individual score, but I'm also looking at that child's current score in comparison of every other kid in North Carolina that's made that score over time, and how much they should grow in one academic year. And so I'm making those comparisons, uh, across all of those different, you know, markers. But again, when every, when that A I G group, and I, I mean, that's just one group that we found, there's others, but when, when, when that one group scores at growth for every single test that the district gives individually, and then they're combined together to, to make, to make another, you know, now it's a bigger sample size, how can you not meet?
Well, that would almost be like that forty-seven point one in that column you said to kind of concentrate on. If all those other columns said fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-six, fifty-eight, sixty-one, and then that column still said forty-seven.
Yeah. And, and, and actually, when I, when, when the cabinet were going back over Cheryl's numbers, Cheryl had actually done, she had, uh, done the C C R for one column. And so that's what John and I were like, these numbers don't make sense. So we had Cheryl to go back, instead of G L P numbers, she had pulled the C C R, which is only fours and fives. And so at that time, it looked like we killed everybody.
I had to fix that, copy and paste there, copy and paste there.
Fix that column because of course we want the numbers to be accurate. But you'll see it in just a minute when I, when I present the growth report, that, that, now again, it's, it's just one subgroup, but you can meet growth at every single test you take and you don't meet it for the overall A I G kids.
I guess what I struggle with, and I'm, I'm sure I'm not the only one, is I get it, right? I mean, I, you know, look at Asheville City, they outperform everything with the exception of like two columns, whatever. And obviously it's Asheville City, so A for affluent, you know, they're pretty well-to-do community for the most part. But I guess my thing, and I know that different kids, different challenges, we don't, the pastor mentioned it when he opened us up for prayer tonight, we don't know what their, their challenges are, but, 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 and that's very, very true. But how do we reach that kid? Because that kid has the same, just because they come from a challenged home, don't mean they can't, don't mean, don't, don't mean they can't make a five. And so what are we doing specifically to, like, I get it. Two-parent home, get home, homework's the first thing, somebody's checking it. That goes on at my house. I don't, but I know it doesn't go on everywhere. So I guess what I'm asking is, because of our challenges, and we're not the only ones, I mean, go down that list, but what can we do different than Conapolis or, uh, Whiteville City? Let's bring it home, Sampson County. I don't want to be at forty-seven one and Sampson County be at forty-four. I want to be at eighty and Sampson County be at forty-four. I'm just saying, like, they keep score for a reason academically and otherwise. So I guess what I'm asking is, what are we doing to try to instill, and I know we are, so that's why I'm asking, what, what are we doing to try to instill in that kid that um, doesn't have, it, you know, they get home, they, it don't matter if they do the homework or not, right, in terms of accountability at home. And I hate to say it that way, but the truth, the truth. So what are we doing to get that kid to a four and a five, or a three?
Yeah, I think one thing that we're doing is avid. Uh, you know, we've gone avid system-wide now. Greg's school's not, not avid yet, but we're, they're utilizing avid and the tenants of avid is, uh, you know, teaching things such as organizational skills, teaching things such as study skills, giving students, uh, having them to have a vision for a college and career that's maybe outside of the vision that their own families are providing for them. Uh, so we just did avid day last Friday. We had, uh, a parade at Angela School where they were dressing up as their profession. Uh, we take them to college campuses at the middle school and at the high school so that they, you know, can see that this is a, this, this can be attainable. A, a, a lot of our kids, uh, and, and that come from, uh, certain, you know, areas and certain socioeconomic statuses, they don't see college as being attainable. I mean, I think we had three great examples of our governor's school kids that came up here earlier. And two of them said they wanted to go home from day one. Uh, because, you know, they, it's not, it's not being in culture in them that, you know, that, that this is attainable. Uh, and so, uh, that, that's been something that I've really strived to do, uh, is to get avid here so that they can see and have a vision that, um, growth is possible. I mean, you're, you're talking to an individual that I'm the only person in this whole entire household that's ever graduated from college. I mean, not, not even direct family, keep going out, the nucleus of the family. And it's because somebody shared with me that it was possible, attainable. Uh, and so trying to get those kids to see that college, career, uh, of course, we're doing a lot with our C C P classes. We're doing a lot with our C T E offerings, uh, N C V P S. We had conversations today with, with kids that are taking N C V P S classes at middle school. I mean, there's a lot of different things with it.
And the retesting now that we can do before the school year ends is also a benefit. Because now we can do it, instead of having the kids come for summer school, it's hard to get some of them to come back. They can have remediation and tests before the last day of school. And last year was the first year we've been able to do that in many years.
So let's use avid as an example. Is, what's, is there a somewhat local district that has been an avid district for, I guess, like, okay, if we're at forty-seven point one, I, is there an example, because I'm, I'm sure y'all looked at that as a driver of why you wanted to be an avid district? I, 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 if there was a district in the mid-forties in terms of results, is there, is there an example we can point to? And is it a five-year example? Is it? Because I don't know how many years it takes to fully implement avid and have it moving like a well-oiled machine, right? But I'm sure there's a district out there. So is it, does it show that kind of marked improvement? Or does it, does it show that it reaches what we're, should be reaching, I guess is my question. And I'm just using avid as an example. You could use whatever other example you want to. The point to avid, like, i, is it gonna drive those kids in terms of what it teaches them from an organization standpoint? And, and having how their schoolwork is and, and those type things, like, is there a district we can point to to actually see some results that, that is like us?
Well, avid's huge in Asheville City. I mean, absolutely, enormous. Uh, now, U N C Asheville is one of, is the, I believe it's the only avid university in North Carolina. Um, and so they have a lot of pull from U N C Asheville that helps their kids, uh, a, as well. Uh, Onslow, big avid school district. Um, so, so there are.
They're not up here.
Uh, so, so there are some, you know, we just did groups that, you know.
Onslow's up here.
At, Onslow's in the southeast.
Yeah.
Um, so all the southeast is up there, all your city school districts are up there. Lee does some avid, Harnett does a little bit of avid. But those are, those are examples of school districts that utilize avid.
I'm, I'm listening, I'm looking on, just because.
But, but again, I, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be careful, but most experts on accountability are going to tell you that accountability is driven by socioeconomic status. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I don't, I'm, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just.
And that every, that districts east of I ninety-five are crippled when it comes to accountability. They do, they do an accountability map. And they map the districts that have As, Bs, Cs, Bs, and Fs. And the ones that are scoring at Cs, Bs, and Fs are east of I ninety-five.
I know you're using avid as a strategy, one of the strategies, but I think there are so many different variables that you can't say really one thing as the, the driver that will help you get a B or C or move up, go where you want to be, but I think, I think you just have to look at each individual style and what he or she needs. And it may be that, that one caveat for a group of children or ten kids, whatever. But I think it's, so you drill it down to each child, as I was asking about the drop rate and the graduation rate. Like, my question, my next question was gonna be, what do we do? How are we looking for those kids that, that didn't graduate? Or how are we looking for those kids that, you know, did drop out or, you know, I know you said you kind of track them as much as you can, but do we have somebody that's working on that? But back to what Port was asking, I think is, you can look at Onslow and Duke and Whiteville City and all those places. While we're similar, we're not the same. So I, I think you have to drill it down to each, each child, each, you know, in our district, what can we do differently, or more or less? Can we abandon something? Are we trying to do too much? Sometimes we are.
Well, what I would say to, what I would say to that is, and my, and my principals, and, and I are doing our data meetings, and we've got some principal experts in here when it comes to data. They, they, they know M class, they know I-ready, they're, they're, they, they know this stuff better than I do. Uh, and you can ask Greg Dirks over there, who's a, a pre-K kindergarten principal. He can tell you everything you need to know about M class, everything he, he needs to can tell you about individual students, where they're are, how they're ensuring that those kids are getting growth. Uh, Angela can do it, uh, Nicole can do it, Principal Green can do it. So we've got, uh, data experts in our building who are drilling this stuff down to exactly what you're talking about, individual data. Uh, Greg and his teachers were absolutely sick, uh, in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four results. Uh, when they, uh, when, when their growth number
Negative one point seven.
Went down to a negative one point seven, whatever it was, and the year before it had been a positive six point nine eight.
Still remember.
Karen Davis said I was gonna flip the tables over for that, and you're gonna put seven three down.
So, so, so when, when, when they're meeting with their P L Cs, they're discussing not just grade level data, not just demographic data, not just A I G data, they're talking about individual students. Y'all, principals, y'all wanna grab that?
We just had our N T S S meetings today where we were talking about individual student meetings, checking in on those tier-two and tier-three students, especially our tier-three students, and what are we doing, what are we seeing, what plan do we have in place, what interventions should we try? So like, we are not only, as, um, Dr. Johnson said, discussing grade level, we are digging into individual student needs um, and, and, and trying to meet those needs. We have our interventionist who's trying to help meet those needs. We're trying to be creative in our I N E and how we're being strategic about meeting all of those student needs as well.
And part of that too, I think, is how you, how you utilize.
Absolutely.
Forty-five, whatever, you have forty-five minutes, which y'all might even out.
Yes.
Oh, well, and then thirty minutes to get that certain concept. So what, how are you, how are you utilizing?
Thank you. I, I guess my question, and I've heard so much, but a few things, I, I see the blank spaces, um, looking at the green spaces and the blank spaces. First and foremost, I would like to know a little bit about how close we're getting to be green on some of those in order to be able to, to say, you know, where do our efforts need to be? While, while I respect the fact that we are, while I respect the fact that we're in a, in a socioeconomic county, um, I do believe that with the three students that we had up here, that shouldn't be, you know, I, I, I don't want to hear that we're in a socioeconomic county that cannot perform. And, and I don't mean it that way. I, I don't mean it that way. I do understand that correct, as we mentioned in the conversation. We have parents that maybe when the children get home, can't help them, can't do this, can't do that. I really enjoyed Dr. Harden's response just a second ago, because all I'm hearing is how she's holding people accountable to be able to achieve that, which again, at the beginning, I also heard Elsie Carr, Butler, and Sunset Avenue are feeders to each other. And then I see that other, the drop. I would like to know, what are we doing when there's a student in a corner that we know he's not paying attention or doing something? How can we, what are the initiatives in, in addition to avid to hold us all accountable? Because I respect the fact that principals and data people are handling the accountability, but they're not in front of the students. So how are we getting in front of the students for them to be effective? So we can achieve more opportunities for them to think and to be able to go to college and not have this mindset of, I want to go home and I don't think I can make it. I mean, I see work keys, and work keys has always been a strong part for Clinton City Schools. I see that. Because, because students want to go work and want to go be prepared for the work environment. But what else can we do i, i, in middle school, in the high school? What, what can we do?
That, that, that I'm not being misquoted. I didn't say that our kids couldn't achieve. I said the facts point to the matter that a performance composite is driven by both socioeconomic status. This is fact-proven, it's research-driven, it's been studied over and over and over again. And I noted that most districts east of I ninety-five, what I stated was, struggle mightily with student accountability. The facts are the facts.
And I'm okay with the facts, Dr. Johnson. I guess my question is, what can we do to mitigate the facts?
And I, I was explaining what we were doing, the, the principals were sharing what we were doing. We're also looking at curriculum pilots. We're piloting new E L A curriculum. Couple of years ago, we went all brand-new math, all brand-new math curriculum. We are trying everything that we can to be successful. Again, you can't just look at one piece of the data. When we look at the growth data, you're gonna see that in nearly every single group, we are achieving growth of students. And what, what, what is better to look at than performance data is how are your students growing? Are they growing at third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth? Look at your performance composites across multiple years. Had monumental increases. Fourth grade reading, fifth grade math, fifth grade reading, sixth grade math, sixth grade reading, seventh grade math, seventh grade reading, math three, work keys, not work keys, but A C T, um, students that are, um, L E P, uh, E L, uh, L E P exiting. We had the highest E L progress last year in the whole entire Sandhills region. So I can prove to you that we are meeting the needs. We, we improved our school performance composite at Sunset, improved our school performance composite at the middle school, and went down one point at the high school. and went down one point at the high school. Uh, so we have many initiatives and our kids are doing a great job. Our teachers are doing a great job. But do we, can we improve? Absolutely, we can improve. Are we improving every single day?
But I think then it would be a, at least for me, I can't speak for everybody else, then if we're having all these growth and we're looking better than what we did last year, I think that that's information that we can compare to also show us that we're walking the path to get where we wanna go. It's, it's hard for me not, cause I don't have that information. So then I'm just going based on what I'm seeing.
And I. She's got it.
Okay.
Right there, the yellow, the, 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 the blue and the red bar, this is math, grade level proficiency. Monumental increase at sixth grade, monumental increase at seventh grade, declined in the eighth grade. John, go to sunset. Reading, monumental increase, monumental increase. I mean, th- these are huge numbers. I mean, you're talking about eight and nine percent proficiency. I mean, so the, the, the numbers are there. There's some pockets of declines, of course, and there's things that we've got to work on. But there is a whole lot more to celebrate than, uh, than not to. And I, I wanna make, something resonated with me when I first got on the board that I think I heard Ms. Carroll say. And I didn't really understand it, but the longer I've served, the more I understand it. Which, and it wasn't, I don't even think the discussion then was about test scores, but it correlates to test scores and everything else. How long you been on the board? Okay. And her comment was, uh, around, not, maybe not the exact comment, but pretty close was, um, I've been on here long enough to see it and it's, but the results stay the same. I'm not quoting you directly, but it was, you, you understand what I'm trying to say? Yeah. So I guess my, um, that's why when I look at it, that's why, I, that's why I asked, what are we doing different? Right? Cause you can't, I guess the definition, and I'm not saying we are, but like the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result, which I know we're not doing. I'm not saying we are. John, go to science. But, um. This is an easy answer. Yeah. Because this is what happens. You're not, you're not kicking, you're not kicking a 30-yard field goal anymore. Right. The field goal posts are being moved intentionally. They even say you cannot compare science test scores from 2024, 25. This is in Superintendent Mo Green's letter to parents. You cannot compare science test scores from 24, 25 to any other science test previously. Period. Which is why you did. So it's the same with math. It's the same with the reading. When the state starts performing better, when the districts start performing better, they change the test and they move the field goal post. So no longer are you kicking a 30-yard field goal, you're kicking a 55-yard field goal. And so you get similar results like Ms. Carroll noted, because the field goal posts have been changed. Maybe, maybe the field goal post used to be 12 feet wide. Now they're four feet wide. So it becomes harder to make the, uh, the, what you were previously getting because the tests have changed and they change all the numbers and they change the means. And it's just harder to get that same number over time. So do, I get, last question, I'm a hush.
I, I was just gonna say, so if I'm understanding.
They changed the test. It, it's, it's, it's not that the, it's not that the expectations are changing. The tests change.
So we got a brand new standard now.
We got, we got brand new standards. We got the way that we're testing kids different. Now, now a science test is all inquiry-based. They gave us zero professional development on the science test. They gave us zero information about what was gonna be on it. You, you, you're gonna, you're, you're gonna teach and just do your best. And then they say you can't compare science test scores to previous test scores, but they include science as part of your growth analysis. When's the last time the math test was changed? Does anybody know? It would be, you can look it up for me, uh, Dr. Carr. They change it about every five years. So do, I'm asking now, cause we obviously, and I'm gonna tie maybe the school calendar to this. It's proposed by a vote of our staff, right? And then we obviously have to say yeah or nay or whatever. But do we, cause I know in corporate America, it's like this, and that's why I'm asking. Um, do we meet too much just to have a meeting to talk about a meeting and the next meeting and then the next meeting? Or do we allocate enough time in the classroom? And I'm asking everybody, you cabinet principals. Or should we allocate more time in that calendar for our teachers to adequately be in their classroom to prepare to serve the kids? Are we tying up too much time in? I don't know, like at the beginning of the year, are we tying up too much time? Do we really need to do two days of rah 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 in an auditorium? Or should we be giving them that time back in the classroom? And I don't know if that correlates to this or not, but it might. I know in corporate America, I don't need to be tied up. I was in, out of state last week in meetings all week. Well, it put me behind two weeks in how I need to serve the people that help me achieve my goals at my company. Are we doing the same thing to our staff? Because if we are, we need to stop. And I don't know if we are or not, but. Do we allocate in that calendar, in that school calendar, enough time for, uh, uh, let's just talk about a beginning teacher who we're expecting, we, I say, like the state, I ain't telling my, we're expecting that beginning teacher to generate a, a, a performance and growth results to a classroom of kids just the same as we do on paper, right? I mean, I know y'all, there's different trainings for beginning teachers versus a seasoned teacher and whatever. I'm talking though, this right here. We're expecting that teacher, that first hire at the high school to achieve the same results as we are, a 25-year teacher who's been through the rigors and things. But yet that beginning teacher is tied up in so much training and out of the classroom stuff. How much of it's a waste of time?
I don't think it's, you should be out of the classroom time.
I, I'm, 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 maybe I'm using a poor choice of words. I guess to grill it down. Are we giving them enough time back in the classroom to prepare themselves in a manner to best serve the kids that are gonna walk through the door? Or are they, because of the calendar, and it's just an example, or are we doing like their first week back at school, the week before the kids come? How many days do they have in the classroom to prepare for children versus out of the classroom tied up in something else? And that's just one example.
Well, by state statute, we have to provide 10 days of training to BTs. Um, so Dr. Johnson have, has given me six days before they start in order to first get them acclimated with Clinton City Schools. And secondly, making them feel comfortable with having their mentor there with them, um, part of the duration. And also opening up what the curriculum looks like. What does a lesson plan look like? Um, how do you break down these standards? What does it look like? So we spent a lot of time with that for the simple fact, it's hard coming in. Um, and most teachers now are not trained educationally. Um, they're coming from different fields and to mold them in that timeframe. So yes, meetings are very important and they're not, they're not exactly meetings. We call them PLCs. Because during that time, we're working on academics, we're working on data, we're working on questions that you have. And they have a mentor and a buddy. So with our BTs, we try to provide that extra layer of support so that they can plan with the 25-year teacher, um, on their same grade level, teaching the same exact thing. So they can bond and have an open classroom. Where if one teacher does well on the pre-assessment and the other one doesn't, then they can share the load and switch out. But we try to provide that time in order to make sure that they feel comfortable in their classroom. So to me, it's vital to have this time for the simple fact, I can ask questions. I can meet with, with teachers. Gina can pull them and work on the things that she sees in the walkthroughs to make them better teachers.
Now, I want, I, I want to be quick, just, and I, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm not, I'm not saying, are we providing support for BTs? Maybe I said it wrong. And I know that's not where you were coming from. I, what I wanted to say is because some of it's state-driven, some of it's federal-driven, some of it's locally-driven, some of it's socially-driven, right? Oh, and it's, I'm just guilty as anybody else. If, if my employer, for whatever reason, is, I have to worry about so many different things. And I, it's like, it's like a football player on defense. I, if his coach is trying to make him do nine different adjustments pre-snap based on what he sees on the opposite side of the field, he's thinking too much and he can't go play. Equating that to, or, and I don't, are we, because of some requirements or whatever, are our people thinking so much about so many different things that they can't go make the play? That's what I mean. Because, and I'll even simplify it like this. Are they so worried about only being able to wear blue jeans on Friday or Monday? That, no, but I'm just saying, I'm not, I know they're not, but I'm use, trying to use a simplistic example that they're just not worried about t- teaching the kids. And if any of that is within our control to take off their plate, right? That's what I mean. I, take the, take the jump off the plate, right? If, and I mean, listen, this open session, everybody knows it's been on WRL. We made the decision as a board to go against state law and do a different calendar. So if we can do that, we can tell them that we ain't doing something else. If it makes sense to educate youngins in a better manner, I'll vote for it and deal with the consequences later. And, yeah, and I guess what, and I know a lot of it's mandated and we ain't got a choice, right? Something, you just gotta do it. But where, where we might have a choice and we think we making whatever ain't got us for the calendar yet. And, and, and the other thing I'll say, and I will shut up. It predominantly, well, I mean, there's pockets everywhere. But if you just glance at that real quick, it's a southeast problem. So what I've had John put up is a article that Ed NC does every year. And the title of this article is mapping the school performance grades. Uh, and so, uh, they do it every year and they've been doing it, I think since 2015. Any, uh, and it does all the As, Bs, Cs, Ds, Fs, and non-scoreable grades. One of the things that they did this year, but I'm not gonna have John go to that, is that is there was a big push that year to change the percentage of performance composites. And so they were looking at like a 50/50 model, cause right now it's 80% achievement and 20% growth. And so I may have John in a minute just show what it would be if they changed that. This is really a state problem. Because what, what's really interesting is when you compare NAEP scores, which is the same test, it's not a different test. They give the kids the NAEP test in all of North Carolina, well, not all of North Carolina, certain grade levels that they give to kids in Florida, that they give to kids in Texas, that they give to kids in Arizona. And there was a, I showed this to my cabinet, um, it's been probably. And there was a, I showed this to my cabinet, um, it's been probably a year ago. They compared NAEP scores and they compared the number of A, of As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs in, 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 in states that have the performance composite model. North Carolina was the only state that had an abundance of Ds and Fs. Remember I showed you this, guys? But our NAEP scores were not statistically significantly lower than any of those states. Where we have four and 500 low performing schools, they had 1% of, of their schools low performing. So the issue is not how our kids are scoring. What's the size of the goal, goalpost? Are we using, so, so John, John, go back to that top one real quick so they can see that. So, so this, this is what it is.
That's what it is right now.
Not right there. That's, that's what it is with the current model. So if you go up one, this is what it would be if it was 100% achievement. Go up one, John. This is what it would be, uh-oh, now we're getting totally different. Now, if we go 100% growth, where's all your F schools? So again, it's the way North Carolina grades their schools.
So in an ideal world, where we wouldn't say, to your point about moving goalposts and this, like, what, to the seasoned educator that has done it forever and knows the deal and knows achievement and results, what's, what should the, the, the ratios be?
So, so, so I'm, I'm gonna stop you there before I answer that question. John, any of my cabinet, help me. The last three state superintendents have called for and demanded school performance grade changes. Got all the superintendents together, y'all come up with a plan. We're gonna take it to the legislators. It's been nixed every time. So who is it that wants North Carolina school, public schools to fail? Because all we've got to do is change our performance composite to a different, uh, to a different percentage. And it automatically changes the number of schools that are As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and Fs.
So what should it be?
At minimum, it should be 50% proficiency, 50% growth.
I'd go to that one.
John, I think it's.
Yeah, right there. Is that, is that it?
This is the map with 50%.
Scroll down, John, make sure that is the right, yeah, that's it.
So now you've only got 18 Fs when you go 50% growth, 50% achievement.
So we're, we're either, if I'm right, if I'm, if I, if I made an A in geography.
I can tell you which school is dark green in every single county. Can my cabinet tell you which, which, uh, school, what'd you say? Early college, dark green, every single county.
Yeah, but, but go back in, I mean, what, what would we think?
Go back in, John.
If we, if it was, if it needs to be a minimum 50/50, what, we're, we're yellow and, and light green, right?
Yeah, cause, yeah, so you're, so you can see that, you can see your schools south of, of Clinton.
No, I'm talking about us, like.
Right there, right there in the, right, right there beside the dark green.
Right underneath the dark green. So we're all yellow and light green.
Yes. The dark green's gonna be your early college and your, and your yellow and light green's gonna be us. Now, some people advocate for 80% growth, 20% performance. I think they got that one in there too. Again, it changes the whole complexity of your As, Bs, Cs, Ds, and F school. Again, I'm not saying anything against our legislators. I'm just saying that our last three state superintendents have tried to get the school performance model changed. And they've fallen flat on their face.
Public schools.
So I've been quiet the whole time because this conversation there's me bad. Um, so I was trying to just be quiet, hoping that we would just move on from it. So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say this and, um, I've heard all of it. I hear all the conversation, we're doing this, whatever. What struck me at our last conference in November? Um, and I just, I don't understand how this, a- as you see, you captured pretty much what, how I feel and, and what I said. Because I do see the same thing year after year. And I pretty much just kinda, okay, well, I guess that's what it is. Because I get, this is the same thing and I hear the same kind of conversation. This is the reason, this is the reason. Then at the last year at the annual meeting, there was a presentation on proficiency. And we, I don't, I don't, Lynn, I don't know if you went in there with me for Johnston County. That, and I, I should have brought it, blew my mind. Unreal, and that's I started scrambling for the pictures because I knew I was taking pictures of the presentation. Absolutely blew my mind. How that school district, and I can only find one on my slide here, one picture from one of the slides. It absolutely blew my mind. Because when we hear this about what's going on and we got kids in sociologic, these, all these situations, it made no difference when Eric Bracy went to Johnston County. And you look at these results, the results, like, for example, this particular one that I have here, the proficiency, and it's not just growth. It, they did talk about the growth, but they made the proficiency work too. And then all this time I've been thinking, okay, growth is, growth is where it's at. That's just what it is, it needs to be growth. But when I went to that presentation, I realized, oh, the proficiency can be increased. So this particular one jumped from 30 and, 30.6% to 56.6%. And this is an elementary school. And then the percentage proficiency jumped from 42.3 to 72.8 proficiency. Um, they, well, had 44 B low, low performing schools went to 70 schools with a B. Um, and, and this made me realize that it can be different. It says, um, in this one, proficiency of this particular one went from 36.5 to 64.7. So there's something, when you ask what can be, there's something that they figured out that we hadn't quite figured out in my mind. And I don't know, and I think about it oftentimes, this came to me, um, the weekend, that we hire a lot of people from the county. And we talked about that, we've had a meeting about that. We hire a lot of people from the county, but we're still not getting, when they come over, we're still not getting the same results. Or we're not getting marked results. And cause in my mind, when we, when we do that, I'm thinking, okay, they've been over there, they've been rocking and rolling. Cause there was a time, y'all know, county schools was outperforming us. Um, and so I'm thinking, well, we're gonna, we're gonna see marked difference when they get over here and we're not. So I don't know what the answers are. Um, I know that great things are happening in the buildings. I, I believe this whole avid concept, this thing, I'm, I'm sold on that. With these, these presentations, when those, when, whenever you all gave the presentations, I'm sold on it. I believe it can make a difference if it's, um, implemented with fidelity. I believe it can make a difference. But for me to have seen that result, it's making me think something that they figured out. And so one thing I was wondering, when I saw it, when I thought about this, I was wondering, um, Doc, when you, you guys, superintendents, y'all come together? And like at the meetings that you talk about that you got the Southeastern region? Yeah, do y'all share best strategies? Do y'all talk about what works and, um, and things like that? Because somehow or another, he got there and he figured it out. And it sounds like from, I don't know what was go- going on in Sampson County before, but he rocked and rolled in Sampson County too, because they were outperforming us at one point. And then he left and he went up there and he did this. And I'm thinking, what is it that he's figured out or? What was that?
He's now in Cumberland County.
Oh, yeah, and, and I said, now watch, we watch what we see in Cumberland County. We, we're gonna see these numbers. So what is it? And you said y'all do share best strategies and best practices and things. So that was gonna be my question because, you know, we have kids of low socioeconomic levels everywhere. It's all across, and like you said, east of 95, I mean, the demographics are, they're similar, uh, throughout the districts. But we're missing something that we're not, that we hadn't been able to get them numbers up in 15 years. I'm done. We can move on, Board Chair.
Any other comments or questions?
About, uh, I guess Cheryl has finished.
Yes, she said, she said. Thank you for the, oh, the presentation and numbers.
Yeah, uh, Carol, I think you're talking about, there was a, Eric had, had a, a handout, it was a little chart, remember, it was like a little.
It was like 11 by 17, I still have it on my desk at home.
Yeah, yeah. I, and, and again, I'm just gonna say this again, I just don't think it's one variable. I don't know actually what the magic bullet was that, that Eric used in Johnston or Sampson or what he's gonna use in Cumberland. One thing I did notice in that presentation was, he had a lot of layers of people. Like there's a superintendent, then there's an area person, and then there's somebody else and somebody else and somebody else. And they drill it all down, I guess, but there, there are a lot of variables, I think, that we need to. And I, I, there is not a magic bullet, I don't think we could, there's one thing that we could do or they could do that will make it all happen. But I appreciate the conversation and thank you, Cheryl. Oh, Dr. Carter, you have anything else in your section?
I don't have anything in my section. Um, Dr. Johnson had asked me about math curriculum, if you want me to mention about the, I can tell you. We have been on a five to seven year cycle with standards and testing. And it's moving in the state to an eight to 10 year, just to kinda let you know, so it's gonna be even longer. But, um, the last math standards were adopted in 2016. They had the embedded items in the test in 1617 and a new test in 1819. So we're supposed to see, um, new testing 28, 29.
So 1819 was the last new test for math. That's when they moved to goalpost.
Right, and so it'll be, then they'll do embedded and then they'll have a new test and then we'll have new, yeah.
Dr. Van, we haven't forgotten about.
Nah, we got.
Madam Chair, members of the board, what we have here is our North Carolina prayer certifications and a single set of assurances as, as required by our federal programs department. In other words, in order for our Title I application to be compliant, we have to review these each year. To save you the time of reading the certification and assurances here on this document, I prepared a summary for you all and I will read it to you at this time. As part of our compliance with federal and state requirements, our district must certify and provide assurances under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, as amended by the Every Student Sees Act. We must certify that no policy of the district prevents or denies students from participating in constitutionally protected prayer in our public schools. Second, we must provide assurances that all federal programs will be administered in accordance with federal and state laws, that funds and property purchased with federal dollars remain under proper, proper public control and that we will maintain appropriate oversight, monitoring, and reporting. This includes correcting any deficiencies, resolving complaints, cooperating with evaluations, and following strict fiscal controls to ensure compliance and transparency. With these certifications being reviewed in tonight's meeting, we certify that our Superintendent, Dr. Wesley Scott Johnson, is the authorized agent of the Board of Education and that these assurances have been documented in tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Van.
Do you need a vote?
Just had to read it in order for compliance.
What does that, so in Layman's terms, again, I know, we haven't read that. That means they pray in school.
Basically, they can pray in school and we are not doing anything to promote or prohibit students praying in school. And in addition to that, we are following all federal rules and policies in accordance with making sure that our grant is in compliance.
Just another box to check, like we were just talking about a while ago.
Has the federal money come yet? You, you have the Tyler one money yet?
We haven't received our Title I money as of yet. We have had a couple of updates, um, updates that right now are a little unsettling, but I'll wait until we get more information as to how our 26, 27 funds will be looking for the next school year.
Yes, sir, thank you so much. Um, Superintendent just reminded me if I did need a vote, I don't have enough people to vote. We need to move on, Ms. Sheila.
I approve whatever it is. I wanted to make sure they got their food, they were going out the wrong door and I wanted to make sure they ate.
We got homework.
No homework.
Oh, no homework?
No. It's blank, there's no homework.
All right, Superintendent, you got five minutes.
I wonder if I can just say it's blank, like, like she did and get out of. Uh, no, please, no, as, as early as I got up to work on this stuff, let, let's, uh, let's, uh, let's do, let's do mine. Uh, John, if you'll jump into the, uh, review of weekly, you're already there, John's already beaten me, he's ready to go too. Uh, so we're gonna jump into the review of weekly shout outs. You all have seen this, we are, you already saw the avid presentations, so they're up there for you. Uh, of course, we've got Dr. McPhail, she has moved into our secondary curriculum support. Uh, she's doing great with that. We've already seen Tripp Gillespie tonight, actually saw him in person, so you don't even have to see, uh, him there. Uh, we want to celebrate that 29 of our students passed the VOG. Uh, so they did great with that. And then to, this week is Arts and Education Week. So we want to shout out Emily Cole, Kristy Slack, China Gay, Mallory Strickland, Stephen Moore, Alina Lemon, Caitlin Faircloth, Michael Ray, Jeffrey Tartt, and Angela Martin as our art teachers. I was, I was with Principal, uh, Green the other day and we were walking in his school and I said, we, I saw Michael and Jeffrey and Angela like in like the same vicinity. I said, look at your arts department. I said, my goodness. Uh, but, uh, anyway, so, uh, shout out to all of our art teachers and, uh, they're doing great jobs. Uh, you got the August newsletter, John, you don't have to pull that up, they've seen that. Let's see, let's, let's see the Feed to Children video. Some of you may have seen this, this is also included, uh, I'll link this to you real quick. Uh, today we've had our All American City. And it does look like Clinton is going to submit an application for the 2026 All American City. Uh, we have to select three projects and we're still picking those three projects. But one that is being, uh, definitely talked about is our Backpack Buddies and our Pantries and the stuff that we're doing for, uh, Food Insecurity in Sampson County and in Clinton. Uh, but again, this is, uh, like a, a Uh, but again, this is, uh, like a, an All American City, so it'll be primarily in Clinton. Uh, but I've also got some pictures there, uh, of, uh, different individuals, uh, that were participating and a part. Uh, definitely want to shout out, want to make sure I shout out because Ms. Carol Worley said they were gonna get a shout out. So we're gonna definitely shout out our J R O T C for all their hard work and, uh, participation uh, in, uh, our Feed the Children event. We got a great picture of them there. It's part of them. There was a lot more. Uh, but again, uh, shout out to everyone who assisted that night. Um, a special thanks to the Sampson Independent. We got an article up there. Uh, and we also, uh, have, uh, pictures of all of our board members, uh, and family members, uh, family members and friends. Uh, Mr. Dale Johnson, they signed, they showed up on Friday, September the fifth, as we renamed the Clinton High School Athletic Complex to the Dale P. Johnson Athletic Complex at Clinton High School. So great celebration. We had a great time, and thank you, uh, to, uh, the, uh, wonderful contributions that Dale Johnson made uh, during his, I'm gonna say illustrious, long time, uh, lifetime commitment to, uh, Clinton High School and Clinton Athletics. Uh, we, that same night, we had, uh, Let's Connect Under the Friday Night Lights, and we had about seventy-five, eighty-five, a hundred kids that came by, stopped by, got information about one of, uh, Dr. B's favorite institutions, uh, ECU. Uh, and, uh, I, I tried to, I had about, I actually reached out to Rich and got a bunch of pictures, but I tried to capture the ones that had our kids in them. Uh, so you'll see pictures of our kids in there, learning more about East Carolina. And what East Carolina did was they brought different, um, college and university, college reps, uh, from the university to talk about the individual colleges of the school. Uh, and so you've got that information in several pictures there. Avid Day, John, show clip three. Yes, we are. So this was our Avid Day Parade. There's all, I've got, you've got other clips there. Clip one is Angela and Sarah Lee having an absolute ball out there, but you've got other pictures from that. Uh, we had individuals that did like a career drawing up there that you see, John. They had some, uh, uh, what do you call those chairs? Philosophical chairs. Uh, John, go, 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 hold on. Yeah. That right there was some questions they had to ask in their philosophical chair. Would you rather be a doctor or firefighter? Then under that, um, we went into Mr. Peterson's classroom, and they had, they had done that like right there where they, what their dream job was. They had to research the university, how much that, that individual would get paid, their goals, all that kind of stuff on Career Day. Dr. B and I saw that, uh, that day. Then this is another picture from, uh, Smooth's classroom. We had things going on at LCK for Avid Day. Uh, you can see that they were exploring careers at Sunset. Uh, so that was Friday, the twelfth, um, for, was for, uh, Avid Day, uh, there. Uh, John is, John has got way ahead of me, but that's okay. Uh, I'll catch up with you, John. So, uh, big shout out to everyone who has already given or donated or pledged for United Way. Almost all of our schools and campuses have already met their goal. And so the, the, the schools that have met their goal, LCK, Butler, Sunset, Sampson Middle, Auxiliary, and Central Office, deadline, I think we have one school left that has not quite met the, uh, deadline. You could probably figure it out by looking there. Uh, but, um, we're hopeful that they're gonna meet the deadline by ten thirty-one. Shout out to our county, we, we, we keep shouting out our county commissioners, our county manager, Alan Van, and local government. John was just looking at some stuff, uh, from, uh, a county commissioner meeting, and we found out that we were approved to receive, uh, a surplus vehicle. We had to do a little bit of research, but that surplus vehicle is a retired ambulance. And so it's gonna be on our campus at C H S, and they're gonna be using it for Mr. Coleman's C T E classes so that our students have the opportunity to learn like, uh, like, like on a real ambulance as they practice their emergency medical technician and paramedic skills. So that's super, super exciting. Uh, we've got, uh, Marching Band Day is scheduled, well, not Marching Band Day, it's Clinton Band Day. It's scheduled for Saturday, October the fourth. John, click on that thing that John already put in my cabinet notes, uh, from last this week. So we've got these bands already committed to perform on that night. Uh, well, afternoon day, uh, James B. Hunt, Wes Bladen, North Duplin, Heidi Tras, Hopton High, South Johnston Union, South Columbus, Graves Creek, Seaforth, South Garner, Topsil are all gonna be at our band day. So twelve bands, excited. You got the times there. Uh, recently, one of our soccer players was noted, uh, for the high school overtime nine-one-zero area code male athlete of the August eighteenth week. They only do twelve North Carolina student athletes each week. Holden Spell was, uh, the recipient of the nine-one-oh male athlete of the, athlete of the week on August the eighteenth. And then I, I kind of had to rub some, uh, some salt in some wounds here. Uh, I was actually getting my haircut this week, and I was talking about this game, and the guy getting his haircut beside me was a James Keenan player, and I did not know it. And I was like, Sammy, I bet you won your money back, uh, when we played James Keenan. But the other night when we beat James Keenan, we beat them six to one, and that was actually Brad's four-hundredth career win, uh, as a soccer coach. Pretty impressive. If you, if you even think twenty wins a year for twenty years, uh, you know, and you don't play but about twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six games in an entire, in an entire year. Uh, so pretty impressive. And so a big shout out to Brad and, uh, his four-hundredth win. And it's always nice when we can put a little salt in the wounds that we beat James Keenan for that four-hundredth win, and it was six to one. Uh, and I was bragging and didn't know that I was getting my haircut beside a guy that plays for James Keenan. Uh, yeah, he won't, he won't too happy. Um, oh, I got several thank you cards. I got, actually got six, I believe, to read. Um, and we haven't had several of these recently, but these are always, you know, they're sincere. They come from our families. And so I want to always make sure that I do, uh, these due justice and honor. So I'm, I'm gonna be serious as I read these. Uh, "Dear CCS district staff and board members, uh, thank you for the lantern that you sent to remember our Jared. We are grateful for your support, prayers, and kindness throughout his illness. In Christ's love, Jody, Keith, Trace, Lane, and Megan Hall." So Jody, if you're listening, big shout out to you. We're thinking about you. And, um, I know that is a tough, tough loss, and hopefully we were able to provide some, um, sense of encouragement during that, uh, very tough time. Uh, this is a thank you card. Says, "So grateful for your kindness. Clinton City School Board of Education and Staff, thank you for the beautiful lantern you gave me and my family during the passing of my sister. We appreciate it. Please continue praying for my family during this difficult time and days ahead. Love, Deborah Debbie Harrell. I saw her today at Butler Avenue, actually, uh, and the new, uh, family. So please continue to keep, uh, Ms. Deborah Harrell and her family as they deal with the passing of her sister." Uh, this one is a little longer one. This is a special thank you act of kindness. Warm the heart, soothe the soul, and make the world turn more gently. It's nice to know there are still people who take such pleasure in doing special things and making others feel good. Thank you. You're really someone special, the McNeil family. Uh, Larry and Thomasine. And I, they, I sent an additional information. The McNeil family, September fourth, two thousand twenty-five, Clinton City Schools administrators and staff. The family of our beloved patriarch, Willie James McNeil. Extend our appreciation for your acts of kindness during our loss. We will forever miss seeing him in his favorite chair and hearing his cheerful greetings. Your beautiful lantern floral arrangements, which we know was selected with much thought and care, has been placed beside his chair as a permanent reminder of his love and wisdom guiding our way. We appreciate it more than words can express, and you will always have a place in our hearts. Thank you, the McNeil family." So also, please keep the McNeil family in your thoughts and prayers as they deal with their, their loss. Uh, CCS family, thank you. We greatly appreciate the kindness and compassion you extended our family during this difficult time. Whether you sent flowers, offered a memorial, or kept us in your thoughts, you touched our hearts. And loving memory of Anthony Allen Morris is written from Donnie, uh, and Donnie lost his brother. Please keep Donnie and his, um, siblings, uh, in your thoughts and prayers with the loss of their brother. Uh, this says, "Thank you, Clinton City Schools. Your kindness is so appreciated, appreciated. Uh, on behalf of the Register and Hicks families, thank you and blessings to you all." And those were sentiments that were offered, uh, by our family. So I wanted to make sure I sent that to you. John, if you'll open up the enrollment numbers. Um, go to daily, John, the second tab. I'm sorry. That'd be better for me to say. You can see that some of these numbers are up and down, but where we are right now, uh, at nine sixteen twenty-five is thirty forty-nine. If I remember correctly, from last year, we were at thirty twenty-three, uh, at, at or around this same time. Uh, so numbers look good. Clark kind of noted earlier when we were talking about our audit, how numbers can adjust your, 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 uh, your actual dollars and cents. So I just wanted to share that information with you. Uh, one of the things also I need to share with you, because this will affect some of our families, uh, is the state health plan is undergoing some changes. I put the whole PowerPoint in there. John, please don't open that up. It's like fifty-five slides. Uh, but what you need to know is that some of our families, uh, and some of our, um, um, staff are gonna be paying more for their health. Actually, it's cheaper from last year because they're trying to get more children involved. So that one little area that John's highlighting there, subscriber and children, they want to get more children into the state health plan. So they've lowered the rate on subscriber and children, but they've increased it for basically every, uh, uh, everyone else. Uh, well, they, that's a good question. They are, they're in the hole majorly. Uh, and they've lost loads and loads of money. Uh, and so they're trying to get more kids in there, which will bring some of the costs down. They're doing a lot of different things. Uh, my staff and I have talked about it. John knows, John's really researched this a lot, but they're trying to set up, what's it called? Banter or lan- lantern, lantern, which is like trying to work with a group of, um, surgical experts. Uh, and that, um, if you need surgery, you would go to these individuals. And what they're saying is, is that like, um, certain areas of the, uh, the state, they may only have one surgeon in that whole region, and that, and that, yeah, and that their prices are really elevated. And so they're trying to find them ways to get better healthcare to lower the cost. Surgery, the surgery could be, they're even say, they're even using the word free in certain situations. Um, John, you go ahead. I'm, you'll do a way better job.
The, the lantern section of this change is right now on elective surgeries only. And like Dr. Johnson said, it's to funnel some patients to underutilized surgeons and physicians in certain parts of the state. There is a choice, uh, proposal, I guess, of phase two, that that would become all surgeries under the state health plan. So that is yet to be seen. We'll see how that pans out as time moves forward.
John, you can keep your mic on, because you're probably gonna have to help me on this next one, too. Uh, uh, the next one here is libraries state law requirements. So, uh, upon ratification of House Bill eight oh five, it became a state law that we must have a searchable database for all library books in a school building. That's not difficult for in the library, uh, because we have a system that does that. Where it becomes very, very difficult is that we also must have a searchable library, uh, database for all classroom libraries. So, you know, um, your wife may have two hundred books, uh, in, in, in her classroom. I think my wife had over eight hundred books. Uh, and so, um, they have to have all these catalogs. And so John has created this Google Sheets page, and our teachers are now having to, again, going back to what Mr. Clark, uh, Mr. Hales was talking about earlier, here's some unnecessary paperwork uh, that we have to do and take part in, because we now have to catalog, um, catalog all of our books in this Google Sheet so that it can be, uh, accessible for anyone who wants to search and see what books are in our libraries. John, anything to add to that?
We've not received a deadline on this one, and I've not put a deadline out there with admins and teachers. Like Dr. Johnson alluded to, the, the Destiny Catalog, which is what we use for our normal circulation, that's going to be easy. I just create a guest account and publish it, and they can do what they will with it. Classroom library is a little bit harder because they're not always in the Destiny Catalog. So we're having to do it this way. Um, you could not put all of that on your media coordinator. So each classroom teacher is just having to list what they have in their classroom, and then I'll be obligated to publish it. We've not heard a deadline yet. We'll try to meet the deadline when it comes about.
Thank you, John. If you'll go to number thirteen, John. Uh, we're not gonna spend a whole lot of time on accountability. There is that E V O S growth report, what I want you all to look at, uh, sometime before our next meeting. I want you to pull up that E V O S, not, not just that, John. If you go up a little bit, uh, where it says E V O S growth report. If you pull that document up, you'll be able to, oh, man, I gotta give you access to it. I will, John. Um, uh, come on, come on, come on. Uh, anyone? What this document will show you is how we did for all of our grade levels. And this is what I was sharing with you earlier. This is just growth. All right? So, um, but like, so fourth grade, end of grade, you can see we met growth. Fifth grade, met growth. Uh, sixth grade did not meet growth. Seventh grade met growth. Math one met growth. Math three met growth. Now, this is just for academically. So I, I really would have to like spend some time, like to show you what you're looking for. But it's gonna show you by individual groups. All right? So you, you got English learners, you got Hispanics. So that, that's what you're, so students with disabilities. So it breaks it down, and you can see it by, uh, demographic area. But what you're gonna see is a tremendous, a lot of greens. Uh, and because we are meeting growth, uh, at, at lots and lots of areas. And this is what I was talking about earlier. Uh, but, uh, John, if you go back to my document, I've got one that I want you to see that I've pulled out specifically, because this is what we sent to North Carolina. So I, I, I'm a big advocate for growth until I see this. All right? So they test, um, they test reading at third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and English two. The only grades they test read. So those are the markers for the each individual areas. A I G. Now, I could pull anyone, but I pulled A I G because this is the one that showed. A I G third graders met growth. A I G fourth graders met growth. A I G fifth graders met growth. Sixth graders met growth. Seventh graders met growth. Eighth grade met growth. English two met growth. So when you go up to A I G and you go to end of grade, that's only A I G kids, end of grade, grade three, four, five, six, seven, and eight. We didn't meet growth, and the markers are negative two point one six. All right? Then in your mind, just say negative two point one six. The only grade that's an E O C for reading is English two. You got a negative seven, four there, and the marker went from negative two, one, six to negative two, two, six. So our question to, now I've forgotten his name. Cheryl would tell me, uh, Paul Marshall. Our question to Paul Marshall was, how can we meet growth at every single grade level and not meet growth for the subgroup? But that's just something interesting that we've come across recently. And, and, and there's, there's more than just that one group. There's a lot like that, actually. She, she, she sent him the inquiry. He, he, um, he misinterpreted what she was saying. He got it. He gave us an answer. And then she sent me the email last night that she wanted me to kind of reword, which I did, and she sent it back to him today. Uh, so we should know something by next meeting. You've got all kinds of stuff in there about the data comparisons, data release letter, mapping school performance grades. I threw that in there a while ago. Uh, just a reminder about our challenge grant and our community contribution link. I know that our, our staff and our community's been assisting us and helping us with that. I threw, John does this little graph for us, uh, every- I threw, John does this little graph for us every weekend cabinet. So I threw that in there so you can see how we're doing on our employee challenge and our community challenge. And these two young ladies that are flanking me tonight, they've told me that community challenge is not going to be a problem at all. So they're going to knock it out for us. And Yes. Go, John, to 20. You've got a couple of letters in here from our state superintendent. Basically, go to letter two, John. It just says basically that we were waiting on the state budget. There were some funds that were frozen in regards to like AP, IB exams, Masters of School Administration. And so what the state superintendent had to do, because the House's plan was much better aligned. If I say anything wrong, y'all, y'all correct me. It was better aligned to the needs of public schools. And the Senate plan was just like pennies on the dollar. But because there's not a state budget, they could only allocate the minimum of the funds, so they had to go with the state budget plan. So when we look at like AP exams, we don't have enough AP money, AP exam money to pay for all of our AP kids. They just gave us a little bit. For the one about Masters of School Administration, I think we got what, three months, Emily? Like three months of money that's supposed to last the whole year. But it's because they had to go with the Senate's plan because the House plan, well, number one, because the House and the Senate can't agree right now. And they had to go with the lesser of the two budgets as they distributed their funds. And that's what, basically what that letter says. You've got a new athletic handbook that's down closer to the bottom, John, right there. And then I've got a whole bunch of dates for you, things that are going on around and in the district that y'all might have interest in going to and participating in and seeing. Oh, real quick, because I don't think I made that point. John, if you'll go back up to the top real quick to the standard PPO and plus plans, it is number five. So those new rates do not go into effect until January 1. And our teachers will have the option to adjust their plans, change their plans during the open enrollment period, which is October 13th through the 31st. If they were, if they were, it used to be called 8020. It's called something else now, plus PPO plan. And they want to go to the 7030 plan that we used to, what used to be called the 7030 plan, but now it's the standard PPO. They can make that adjustment and maybe offset the difference that they were going to have to pay because of the new cost, if that makes sense. During that October 13th through the 31st, they can select what, what plan they want and they can change. Maybe they were subscriber only and now they want to be subscriber and spouse or subscriber and children. They can do that during that October 13th through the 31st. Sheila, do you know the answer? Questions for me?
Questions without a J? Y'all still awake? All right. Thank you so much. No questions, we'll move on. We need four voting delegates for the NC SBA conference. And Nicole sent me a note and said I had to, I had to get a vote on this. If you're not going to the conference, it's, I didn't put your name on it, of course. So the voting delegates are the pastor, that old girl and myself. And I'll need a formal vote on that. Second. Second, all in favor, let me know by the word I. Motion carried. Thank you. Professional development opportunities, I guess you know if I'm Ms. Hayes or Ms. Jones. If you're interested in attending anything, we'll, we'll get you registered. They'll get you registered. I sent you an email today about the conflict of interest, professional development. If you haven't done that already, please do that. It's required. Sheila, let's do by the end of the, when is it? End of the year? So your login information is on the email I sent today. Our next meeting is this May, October 16th at 5:30. And on, on your board agenda, you have all the meetings, I think, for the rest of the year.
You know, I was going to just give you the question of the White's meeting tomorrow. First, we had the conflict with Dana. But I did reach out to some of you and we had confirmed that she was due. And then she called me. I was telling her that we were at dinner. And I thought it was our original day that we were taking Nicole to dinner. I said, I guess they forgot. Wish you weren't going to call anybody else until we better know. But I did reach back out to her and let her know that we had the luncheon for Nicole yesterday that we were available to go. So I don't really know where she is with that because I haven't heard back from her. Just go.
You all can go. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I already.
A second time? Because I'm going to confirm this first time. Okay. Because I said they would be at the dinner for Nicole on Thursday.
So do we need to just show up or do we need to notify her?
I messaged her back and told her about the, that we already had the luncheon and that we were available to attend on Thursday and she hasn't responded.
Yeah, they're not, they're not, they're not going to turn the board members away. So it's a R and R tomorrow night. Starts at 5:30.
Okay. Thank you, Carol, for that. Any other comments or questions about, from the board or Dr. Johnson's staff? We need to go into a session. Y'all going to be okay with that? All right. At this time, I request a motion to enter into closed session to discuss matters of personnel. Motion made by Dr. Rodriguez. Second, Pastor Russ. All in favor, let me know by the word I. Let's take like a five-minute break. Everybody, including the cabinet, kind of lead us in that room in about five minutes.
Look, I made it two hours.
Evaluation.
That's right, same.
Who said, uh, car is led a motion second by?
That right.
That man Rodriguez. Uh, in the discussion, it's not on the title of every no matter where that. But you care also need a motion to adjourn to tonight's meeting.
Thank you very much.
Motion may but. All inside will be no matter where that. Uh, most of care, thank you.